Right, we are recording, let me start the livestream, it'll be probably a moment or two.
So Mayor, I might say a thing or two when you do your welcome and then I need to, I want to go through the agenda, but I'm driving back there. So I might be making some laughs today.
So just what she's getting at, so this is some of our new technology, the council's chambers zoom card is the one that's still in pieces over there, so we borrowed this one from the court. So part of our, if we money we want, the technology. Noah says he can hear us very well with that microphone that's sitting over there. And we have two Bluetooth versions of that microphone that are going to be for our work studies that someday they'll work. And at some point, I'm using a dongle here to communicate here, but we'll have that display, we were here, we put it up there. And so that our zoom, that TV and this TV will all work harmoniously. We have the microphone system someday that'll work, we have all the parts, we just don't have it working. And this is touchscreen and we can write on it someday. How are you doing on that livestream, Jeanie? I don't see it there in the top left corner yet.
Will we be able to tell if people are watching?
Not livestream, but if somebody joined the meeting, it will be just like, okay, then we're going to keep that muted. I don't know what I hear, but I have the livestream is another icon right here in this corner, right after recording. That's how I know she hasn't got it.
Hey, Rob.
Yeah.
We're actually, I'm talking to Brandy right now, the livestream option is not showing, so we're looking into the Zoom settings to find out meeting versus webinar, so it might be a couple more moments, but we'll, we're hoping to get this.
We can do our introduction before we, we are recording, so let's, let's not stall any longer here.
Is there a link to the main panel website?
Yes, there is. It's on the red, it's a red banner across the top. Well, it's not live streaming to the website, our website, it'll go to YouTube.
That's okay, but there's.
Yeah, focus, thank you, Sean. All right, welcome, everybody, we haven't seen each other in over a year and, and like, good to see all your faces in person. And this is Joy Juleson, she's our facilitator from Triangle, and she's going to try to throw the big shoes that Sophie has. Sophie's done a great job for us in the last couple of years, she got my baby, and Sophie assures me that Joy is as good or bad.
A lot to live up to, welcome, oh, go ahead.
So this first part of the day, we're going to be, and this, I've got some information to present. And then you guys have some items you guys want to talk about, we'll liberate, so we'll spin this side of the room around so that you guys can see each other and, you know, we used to be making social distancing. Try to keep your mask on unless you're eating or drinking, and we've got hand sanitizer and that type of stuff in the bathroom if needed. So, welcome and take it away, Joy.
So I just want to observe that for a lot of us, a big day to come back in person, but this is my first meeting since March 3rd, where I did a big workshop in Olympia, and I did virtual. So for all of us, I just want to know, this is kind of a big day, and you've met Sophie and potentially Claire before that from Triangle. And so we're all very different humans, but I just want you to know that we all utilize best practices for a third-party mutual facilitator. My job today is just to keep you on time, keep you on track unless you all choose as a group to change course. Allow downtime in speaking, and so, and then just, yeah, make sure you all have the ability to provide two foot, and I'm just going to guide you through a structured conversation today so that you can have those conversations that'll inform your decision-making in the future. So I was just going to walk through the purpose of the agenda, you all have agendas on your table, I'm not going to be scrolling through here on the screen, but you can scroll through on a real paper. And so the purpose today is to focus review, a focused review on existing projects and discussion on allocations of very low funds. Engage the council on long-term goal-setting and policy discussions. And there'll be a presentation on the organizational assessment by your mayor, and it does have time for this, there are some policy discussions that may take more time. And so, you know, it's up to you how we want to deal with the last agenda item that might be due to the future if you want. So just walking through the agenda, we're in the welcome part, and then we're going to spend about 16 minutes reviewing existing projects and discussing those, and that's all around the allocation of very low funds. And then we're going to revisit your guiding principles, which are over here on the wall, and add a diversity, equity, inclusion critical. All right, water. And that'll be a 30-minute exercise, and we're going to take a 10-minute break, that'll be about 10:10. And then move into a 60-minute agenda item, which is, the council is going to discuss policy and long-term goals. And so there's a discussion there, you've all submitted some of your discussion points, policy items, and there's a lot. You'll notice there's a lot, and so we need to, we need to decide what we're going to get through today. And the mayor's asked that we do a little bit of prioritization at the end. I think we can, if we, there's two options, we can run through them all fast and do a prioritization, or we can focus on some to discuss in more length. Then we'll have another 15-minute break, and we'll come back for that prioritization activity. So 16 minutes for discussion and then about 20 minutes to prioritize, and that's, I think you've done this before, a dot exercise where I'm writing things down and you come in and I provide dots and prioritize your project. And then we're going to review the organizational assessment, this is a high-level review, and then wrap off by 1 o'clock. And we'll just, you know, discuss commitments moving forward before we end. So I want to pause, and I think you've all had a chance, so this is still makes sense to you, is there anything you want to add? Is this in line with what you were hoping today?
Looks good.
Looks good, okay. Great, that, Mayor, did I get anything anything you want to add? Okay.
Let's get rolling.
Let's get rolling.
It's open enough that we're talking, it's the, the project status.
So that's where you want to start, and then you want to capital?
Yeah.
Capital, okay, great.
So, you know, I'm going to go through this first part because I, it's informational. It shouldn't, and depending on what committee you sit on, it could be you're solely immersed in this, but I just want to make sure everybody has the same level of understanding of all, of all projects and things that staff will do. And so, this is a month, we have, this is an eight-page document, it's about a, I shrunk it a little bit, it's about a 10 or 12-page document typically. And we have an hour to an hour and a half meeting once a month with planning, finance, and ACB to make sure that we're all communicating now these project, project for things that we're doing. So we have the water comprehensive plan, which I know the utility maybe is very urgent. You're seeing elements of it coming to the council, the CFC discussion, connection charges, and later in the year, we're going to talk about rates. And we also have a stormwater comprehensive plan underway. There could be a future discussion item about a, a stormwater capital facilities charge. And once we have a plan and we know what it is we're trying to build. We've got a study for the downtown basin underway. We likely would like to give the upfronts after we get the, where the water runs to in a future meeting, or a future project. We've been having a conversation about a regional storm facility in that Flower Meadows, City South area. Ian is working on an in-house design, or the faculty's out of maternity leave, we know that he's not going to get that. The, we're talking, we talked to finance committee about their project, they're afraid of that plan. It's about 32 acres, about 20 that's usable, it's going to get bought up and developed if we don't start real estate negotiations on it. So likely going to cost about $1 million to buy that piece of land, start that process. You know that parks and, and if it's all up here, a little bit, Joy, didn't stop me at any point, it's sort of catching your mind that I'm not.
Well, I do have one question, if you go back to the first one.
Go back to stormwater.
The one question that I forgot that has lots of time, you're talking about the possibility of borrowing to do the stormwater, I guess, I'm assuming that, that the, that particular utility would be responsible for making the purchase.
Yes, so the challenge, and I had some conversation about that, there isn't a lot left in that fund and the cash flow. And if we did that, it would hamster us as far as bringing other capital projects forward, we're building that out. So that's why we're going to, we're working on a comprehensive stormwater utility plan, so we know all the projects. And then we can look at whether we need to increase the stormwater rates or create a capital facilities charge, which the sewer and water have, that stormwater doesn't have. Because it can, it can, it can afford likely that, that payment, but it will prevent us from doing anything else with the utility. So it'll solve an immediate problem, but there's a long-term bigger picture that we have to solve, which is that comprehensive plan to drive.
Well, for all practical purposes, if we were to move forward with that in part, since then, the current utility would be on the front, if we did not look at some other source, whether it be rates or charges.
Or tapping other, you know, another source to put in, you know, we can, we can put non-restricted dollars in our utilities, they can't come back the other way. And those are bigger discussions that we need to have, one, we've got the finance about negotiating on the property. We have an interested seller willing to sell us that piece of property, once we have a purchase and sale, then we got to figure out how we're going to bring it. That'll be the next conversation.
When it comes to how we move forward, those were.
Yes, and that would bring back all of the very opposite.
And my objection to this particular part of the conversation is that this is one of my priority issues. Is to start working on the stormwater element for the solution for City South.
And this is the first step, get a piece of property, paying for it, and then, as I said, Ian's working on an in-house design for that facility, so we're going to be able, once, once we have another engineer hired, he goes back, he's only working two days a week. And then we're not keeping up in the development route, but help is on the way.
What's, what's the concept of a storm facility, a stormwater park?
Yes, that is, that is our goal, it is a 32-acre piece of property that borders Black Jack Creek. And so we have some passive and active recreation opportunities, 12, 20 of it, we can do something on, we'll park a storm pond. And what our fear is, if this property got developed, we would have to build very expensive vaults like we did on Tremont, which would drive the cost of much more than buying this piece of property. Beginning of this piece of property is elevation-wise, the right place and for that basin, and it gives us other opportunities to do parks and recreation around the facility. So it's, it's an exciting opportunity if we can acquire property.
And I drove up that area yesterday, drove around that area, and there's still a lot of land there that appears to be, is great for infill development. And so we don't want, we don't want to lose the opportunity to start the solution for stormwater, which will then move into, we can't do anything for complete streets up there until we do stormwater fix. But driving up there, there's a lot of land up there, and I know that community development has another permission for infill or park development across, I think, park. So we're, we're just going to see more homes go up in that area.
You're raising the key, but if there is a portion of the property, a lot of weight in the design, you see, but if the portion of this property that we're using would be used for parks, not that parks have a lot of money, but there is an opportunity to share, you know, the repayment of the department.
Yeah, and that's where we, we get into the parks plan, that's one of the things we pointed to, there's the need for another park out there, so you're right, John, we can use park impact fees to help with this, help develop the site.
And/or look at cost of developing it in three parts.
Yeah.
As the expensive parts of the construction, either way.
Just one more question, is it being entirely designed in-house?
At this point, I think when we get to the, you know, we'll take it to a, you know, I have a staff here to tell me exactly what it is, and I'm usually wrong, but a 20 or 30% design, you know? Where the pipes are, where the pond is.
Right.
And then when we get into the more random design, we're probably hired consultants to do that.
Okay.
And we, last year, we aparied, I believe, about 30 for this, and, and the property owner wrote a letter of support that they were willing to sell. So we know we have a willing seller at this point, until somebody else comes in and offers an opportunity to go build houses in there. So we want to acquire this piece of property, we're going to, the plan is to make like this grant one more time and pitch the sale out at execution date later this year. Mark, and I agree with Mark in this, typically, wow, oh my, okay, so you're going to have to slide and reconnect this.
Oh, that's true.
We lost that connection.
Yeah.
Grants, divide, to start something and buy the real estate are really tough to do, okay, and if it's something, we buy the land and design it, they're much more apt to, you know, now we got Skidder McGee, and, and we're more, much more apt to have a successful grant application. So we think we're going to be able to pursue a grant to, for the construction, and we'll be much more successful.
Well, there are opportunities, sometimes you're, your property value is local management.
Yeah, yes, giving you the money, how are we doing there?
Hi, just here to have. Reconnect?
Yep.
Looking for it?
Exactly, you have nine there.
Right here, okay.
Mr. Mayor's last night, you guys. There you go.
Okay.
All right, and I have a little, we're using Bluetooth here.
New technology.
All right, let's go back down here to the parks again, so you know that we got, what we did here the next few weeks on McCormick's flash pad, we did a value sharing and dropped, dropped costs down. Likely still a limited amendment, we only put 115 in the budget, and we won't know here probably till the end of May, I don't know whether it is what, a true number for that. Parks plan, we talked a little bit about, and by mid-May, I hope to have that part surveyed and was signed up to drive, you know, due to decisions there. Go ahead, slide up, Joy. 640 Bay Street, CC goes about has that under contract, and I think pretty blunt about the council doesn't have any desire to extend that, he's got to perform by the end of the year when that first sale comes together, or where we project comes together, and he's got to execute on that. The negotiations with the bank are going, I think, pretty well. I'm going to talk in detail about that, I've got a slide about Community Center, I'll die a deeper bit out later, later today. So go on to, I am going to address funding and I will share, I was asking, we all owe Emily Randall a big thank you. We were, we asked, we didn't, like, stated session, asking for a million. She got 1.2 million in the senate budget, we had nothing in the house budget, and it's on the governor's desk right now, the capital budget, 1.2 million dollars for the community center for water. So I'm, thank, personally thank her last night.
Right, can I ask you another question, sorry if you go back a little bit, yeah, just a question, keep going. With the splash, the, right, the city of Bremerton, the city of Ford, or did it ease with that?
We have, remember, we unknowingly cooked that harbor, the splash pad, the water, was, it's been our water meter. Okay, everything on the north side of Old Flute, this Bremerton service area, so when the war drawing happens and a lot of things came to light, and Bremerton said, you did what? That's our service area, and so that's why we have, we have commitment to them. It's down farther about having certain things done related to that agreement. Fortunately, COVID is keeping this, because this is taking longer than we thought, we're supposed to have it done this summer. So we hope to have these improvements done this summer, even if it's left that active, when the circulation is provided, COVID allows us to. Yeah, there is, it's related to water infrastructure, because it's our, it's our city and Bremerton's service area. And I pushed a bit to try to, I guess it's basically unheard of to trade service area.
I don't know, we're going to answer that, we're about to suggest.
Yeah.
Well, you've done it, you've done well.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a big.
It's a big, you know, so, 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 you know, if it's somebody else who's, we're able to serve our, so.
One of the things, one of the things people like too though, is, you know, how we used to have a surcharge from McCormick Woods because they weren't part of the city. That's an issue, the utility tax that we're charging our citizens. Okay, well, there's Bremerton, we need to be charging Bremerton and Westside that same. Those citizens, those citizens in that area don't pay the utility tax, the rest of our citizens pay because they're, we're not serving the water. So, so there's something, it's another thing we need to take care of, or ready to move on. Yep, all right, we'll come back to the community center, we've got a sewer cuts, comprehensive plan. Some of these are a little redundant, because some of them are capital elements and then specific projects, you're, I think you're familiar with that, facilities. We're doing, we also, as far as our comprehensive plan, we, to, to be able to utilize our REIT funds and other restricted funds, things have to be in our capital facilities plan. You just can't decide when to spend the dollars, they're not in our plan, you can't spend the dollars there. So we need to evaluate, in our public works department is growing, we've got a lot of expensive equipment sitting outdoors and the staff there, so we need to analyze the long-term plan for all of our facilities and recognize what, what it is we need. We may not be able to afford them all tomorrow, but, so we're going to do, hire consultants, probably next year, we'll have a big year review, hire this consultant to be in this capital facility development, which will dovetail into our, our comprehensive plan. That, we were all, we've been talking a lot about City Hall, that should be done, designed this fall, and the wall goes to plan, and I've got, I've got a slide, dropping more detail about the funding of that. Go ahead, slide up, Joy, or Joy? Next step, working on shoreline master plan, we've got a sub-area plan for downtown, we anticipate that, going to planning commission in May, and in June, it should be completed and, or reporting them completed.
Can I, I want to go back to, I don't know if I need to move this slide, but you're talking about the capital facility or plant. And I know for the transportation improvement, one, our tip, we have two levels, one is constrained and it has a timeline. And the second tier is, this is what we need to do, we anticipate this cost, but they're out for six years. Will we see that level with these other plants as to when we anticipate they will be happening and source of funds?
We currently have a couple of facilities plan that has things like parking lots and doing things to City Hall, and, and I think it'll be to that level, and I, I believe so, man.
I mean, it's not just a wish, yes, these are real things and have a timeline when they need to happen.
I hope they're not wishful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we still have to fund them correctly and find a way to, to find funding for it, yeah.
I think that of course you're getting along the same lines, is that, I mean, there's one approach that we, they specifically mentioned, equipment sitting out in the rain and what we need to do to put coverage over it. Versus, is this an opportunity for us to step back and say, should we concentrate everything in one location, or should we look at where is the appropriate things? Or a second location, the public works event?
That's why, two years ago, in Atlanta, the last, so I just played your last session, school district was trying to get the farmery, and I had our hand raised, and I got raised for friend of two, that, hey, we need a public works facility. Please, please, because we are at least rent one of the buildings.
Right, so I just want to make sure when we go through this, that that is one of the elements.
Absolutely, I hear, we talk to Mark all the time, and there are snow events, we'd like to have equipment staged on two sides of the city, because all events on one side of the city, it would work our way out from there. And it would be much more efficient if we were starting from two points, but once again, it takes money to buy a piece of land and, and so forth. And we have a ton of land out there in, around that, in and around that dock, so it, it, it would be more efficient to have two sides off the way. Another alternative too is, I mentioned at the time, if we build a, a nice new municipal park, and it's at City South, we have the old south share, the fire department, and Paul Power Park next to it, that's probably, I mean, we own that. But we, we owe it to that community for them to have a nice park out there, you can't take their park away without giving them something that's good or better, I hope, better. And so there, there's an opportunity right there to turn that into water sewer department, something, or the parks department, something, so anyway, you're correct, John. We can move on here, we're only on page two and taking a little longer than I anticipated, so.
Yeah, just a time check, we have quite a lot happening, we're in love, and then we have to power.
Yeah, so.
Where are you going to be right now?
Water projects, we started negotiations on our water agreement for McCormick, it's going to, part of the driver is going to be that water capital facilities charge, but I made sure that where it will be in there, if we're giving gives $6,000 to McCormick communities, and we're already giving $1,000 for that reservoir. Are, we, we need to, to be realizing some money from those water connections still to take care of our other needs, so we're starting negotiations with them. I think we're, I'm not even, I'm not, I've got, well, these wells layered, diving a little deeper, well 13, you know, we closed that out, the first phase of it is done, it's a foster result, there's really nothing else we can do. So we're going to close that out. We utilized 5.4 million and $6 million for that loan, we'll apply for another loan once we know what our capital is with foster result. Going down to row 11, I just heard yesterday, we got the acting involved alone for the, the design for row 11. And apology, every issue, apology is once you get the design done, that they'll assist us with a DWA, or anyways, apartment of drinking water and something, it, it has, has a loan program. So once we get that design done, we'll, we'll be proceeding with that, this, this. So, once we get that design done, we'll, we'll be proceeding with that. This, this project will be done in a fashion that we believe the well will do nearly twelve hundred gallons a minute, but I think we will go back seven hundred fifty gallons of water rate. Foster will get us to twelve hundred. We're gonna design this in a way that it will pump the twelve seven fifty. And then as soon as foster is resolved, we open up the valve and we've got more water, probably in the structure there to take care of. So, slide. Up, we're good. Well twelve, McCormick is built with the test pilot pool. And it appears McCormick and our negotiations, once we have foster resolve, they're gonna build well twelve out for us. There's another well, uh, reservoir, it's called a three ninety zone, which will serve McCormick West. And we need an intertie that comes down from Old Clifton. And now with, uh, possibly Doug's robot's property wanting to develop on the backside steps and it's giving opportunity to take a shortcut through there and maybe bring an intertie to connect the two systems together. Twelve, I'm painfully aware of the foster pilot program, if you can skip ahead here. South Red Reservoir, that, that South Chad Reservoir, we've got a reservoir there that has been punctual for years. And, uh, we're in decommissioned, but we need to tear it down to a wall down. Uh, so, keep going, uh, this is the, that three ninety, uh, zone that I was just referring to. There's some booster pumps, um, that need to be built to pump water between the two systems. Uh, you can have discussions, Glen Rora is at the backside of Bravo Terrace. Uh, that's, uh, five hundred housing units or something that'll go in there. Uh, and how they access and we've been talking to West Town, they want to, we want to, but I think we're, we're, we're.
Going back to the, um, the, um. The connection between the system, is that, is that a different connection than the one that we talked about? This connection, connecting the McCormick system with.
It's the same, there's two, and, and someday we'll have two pipes. One that goes up Old Clifton and the other one that goes up Longwood Woodside. So that we can circulate water. But in the, in the short run, because they're, they're about four million dollars apiece. We need one of them to, so that when one system's, because likely well eleven's gonna come online, then well thirteen. We want to be able to take water from well thirteen on, at the top of Centric Hill and get it out to the new reservoirs and, and the McCormick Communities until well eleven or twelve comes online. And, and so then we're, it's really the challenge is the summer line. So we're not buying that water from Bremerton, but we're providing it ourselves.
So, so there are two different.
There are two interties, one on Old Clifton and one that goes up Longwood Woodside.
But the second one is primarily just to help with circulation, not just apparently being able to manage your water.
Yes, and redundancy, from the fire, fire department, you know, the pump, both the, these pumps that we're talking about, one of them goes down. We've got the ability to move the water from, on the other side. Yeah, a quick question, what is foster moving? Well, we found out last night that the legislation is continuing for us. So, here's a nick. And I'm, I'm diving into the, you know, the radical here, but, um, in the countywide planning policies, we're purposely, uh, siding with, also really wants to expand their U G A. And the tribe is opposed to it because they're not taking other reasonable measures like we are to increase density and height. Which they should be under the Rock Management Act. And so we're, we're, uh, we're siding with the tribes because we want the tribe, it is the right thing to do. Uh, but the part of our, our, it's politics related to, because we really need the tribes to get on board with foster. And, and so we're, we're helping them champion, you know, they're championing and we're supporting them and, and this, uh, C P P discussion because we need their help with foster, they're just getting off.
But it's, the tribe support will be on to do this.
Yeah, that's, that's start of one.
No, I appreciate that. I feel, for my own, the main, I mean, this is a statewide issue.
It, it is, but our, our program, we're giving them up through tribes here for ours, but you're right, this is statewide issue. But the pilot program, our test, you know, test wells, we're, we're negotiating with, with the tribes here.
Are you spending more in city limits or the U G A?
It's in, it's mostly in the city limits. The access, or if they want to build one called Stinger or something like that, there'll be an, I think, I believe there'll be an annexation. They'll need to build a road out of that along the backside. So there's, there's likely will be an annexation for that to go forward. All right, so let's keep, we can move on here. Oh, those are the McCormick, uh, pump stations going down, I'm sorry. The great pump station was up there, I think we're all versed with that, the two McCormick fuel stations. Ours is almost done. There's, uh, there's some warranty things with, on, on the fuel station one of the McCormick. Um, I don't think there's a lot to discuss about here. Snowwater capital projects, we, we're still working on that analysis. Uh, uh, I can't remember what's, Arnold Creek, I think it's called. Uh, there, Ruby Creek, we've been applying for grants to Ruby Creek, Covert. Um, and Washita has a number of Coverts that they're replacing out there by High Sixteen. Uh, it's a coordination that they're in the city. Uh, security permits, we've done the smart parts here at City Hall. Uh, which worked great. We need to do more of them, like the front door. The, you know, we were just identifying other areas in a future project and right now, we're in the midst of, uh, the smart locks. So they're chipped for all of our, uh, sewer and water places. So that we have uh, tough, definitely accountable, you don't know who's, who went somewhere. So these smart keys, if we have a problem and everybody says, you know, I didn't do it, now we, we know who was there last and who put the switch or didn't put the switch. So it is, um, it's important. Uh, we're still trying, we're gonna wash that to close out Tremont. So, get Tremont closed up and can't free up that last two hundred fifty thousand of the whole thing in our REIT that we have obligated. We don't believe we have any challenges in how we spend our money, but we can't close it out.
What is the reason?
Is that just a workload issue?
Probably, and, you know, it's tough to get, whether it's audiovisual consultants or, everybody's working remotely. It's just different getting a hold of people and, and getting things done.
Well, they laid off a whole bunch of people.
Could, could be, yeah, it's, it's been, it's been challenging because they're closed out. I, I know we're building sidewalks, developers are building sidewalks. And I keep pushing on, um, to assist the workload issue. I want a document so that when we get served with something about, uh, ADH, you know, that we're, our, our sidewalks and what we're doing to improve our sidewalks. I can hand it to you. Here's, here's all the sidewalks we've built in the last four years. And here's how, here's the ranks. And, and I would say eighty percent of what's happening are being, being built by other people. But it's happening, you know? So, I, I, and, and if you don't have a document to support it, the end of the litigation, I, I don't have anything to, to show that we are, we are making progress.
And I want to give you a useless, a good question on sidewalks and ramps. When we are, uh, approving those, they're being inspected, are we checking the grades on those?
Yes.
Because that was a big worry for a lot of people, I think, initially.
Okay, it's very delicate.
Oh, yeah.
We have a lot of, yeah, um, we've had developers that have been happy with this, so you know, yeah, it's like walked out. Uh, there's some changes in the legislature too, related to school impact fees, and we have a meeting Monday about that. Um, and we're pretty, our, our school district visit, um, they need some help. Uh, I don't want to dive too deep into that, but, uh, there's some changes on that and I think our school district may increase their impact. But they, we're not doing a very good job of documenting, providing, because we're the ones imposing that. They, we're culpable in this and we want the documentation to be better than this and we might come through the goal and that. But we're working through that. Um, we're getting there, we're on page six now, so. That, this, so some of this is dated. I, I put this together a month and a half ago and we were moving headway to Salmon Mary Phase One and we paused that, we're likely gonna put, do a video review and we have staff and we have the money. You know, start, continue that design, we took this, these dollars and put them into the grant to pay for the Lincoln and, and that will round out. Um, which is here. And, uh, funds are coming in very well. Uh, and I think they've got another parking complex on the end of Harrell. Uh, hundred and thirty units yesterday. Um, so, and that will allow, which is a great thing about that, unfortunately, it's West Sound and, uh, super sewer and water, but with this, with this Lincoln roundabout project. Uh, Harrell will get, uh, right turn in and right turn out from, uh, from one. And so when this roundabouts built, you'll have a, a basically bypass created, uh, for that one, that will light the light, the light will right turn.
Downhill storage.
Down, downhill storage, they, and then down there at the T intersection is Harrell.
That's Harrell.
So the end of Harrell and one. Yes, it'll punch through the lung, right, 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 so that, that, I think, from a traffic standpoint, it's a great, uh, indoor project for the community.
That also may encourage us to do something with our park.
Maybe, maybe that.
Not right at Harrell.
All right, um, paving, we're, we're, number of ways, we got that, that grant. Uh, Chris is still planning on paving next year, the city, you know, outlets of the city limits and Liver, there's complete overlays. Um, and then we bought the equipment for the crack seal. Our folks are gonna start that this year. And next year, they'll be, after we've done the crack sealing, then we can do the chip searing over the streets and we've got nearly a million dollars. And I'm gonna advocate that, um, I think the number on the sinkhole is gonna be low and it's gonna even a thought of dollars, so I think we're gonna need to have a discussion at the major review about pumping some more money into, um, the street preparation program. Because it, it, we may be a little short or, or not. I, I want to really perform well on that. I think some of you very much support that idea.
Just for, I think we're short.
So I agree, I agree with you and staff is prepared to bring a more robust program together with you on it. Anderson, you know, roundabout, we keep applying funding for that, uh, from various ramps. Uh, the Bay Street West Pedestrian, we have a situation setting that the federal grant takes from the, the ferry terminal west here up the boulevard that ties the pathway into Tremont. Uh, you know, we just agreed to approve the contract for the right way for that hall. Or is it not that hall for, for pathway? Uh, so we're actively pursuing, uh, commercial property there. Uh, go ahead, Joe, and McCormick, which, there's, uh, the campus parkway roundabout under construction. And we've got an agreement for the McCormick Woods Tribe Roundabout. I would say it's three or four years out, uh, until that roundabout gets built. But the campus parkway, and it's likely gonna end up, the result of it is, there's no campus out there. They're commercial campus, they might change the name of that to, uh, site, whatever they know of inside. Um, Liver, I talked a little bit about that grant already. Um, we have conversations, we try to have conversations about alternative fuels, whether it's propane or electric, you know, I like the one electric vehicle. We're likely gonna buy our second, which is gonna be a departmental vehicle, uh, later this year or next year. Um, yeah, but we need to do more on that area and, and we need to be analyzing and putting infrastructure in place. And it's just really a bandwidth issue, uh, here at City Hall. Um. Capital, I, this is just a reminder, part of this meeting. Um, I talked a little bit about the utility tax you've got to, to place over on this, we talk about it all the time, but it's just having staff and the, the bandwidth to do it. And the state has their roundabout project, uh, at K O C that's moving forward and could be under construction later this year. And so we, we take staff time to coordinate, to make sure that, I mean, some of the things that came to the, the state was gonna just close the whole area for, during the construction, we're like, no, that doesn't work. And, uh, they weren't taking into consideration, uh, fuel trucks, getting to the gas station. And so that resulted in a little design and now they're challenged, they're challenged with getting power with the streetlights. Um, I don't know, and Mark shared that with me the other day and now, so, all right, that's the end of this. And if we can quickly jump to the capital.
While I'm doing that, uh, any questions before we're switching over? We, we have about a little less than fifteen minutes left and another power point this year.
Yeah, and it's, it's only a few slides. It's just a deeper dive on the funding of the big projects. And then I got one, a one pager on the community center.
Any, any other questions?
I know I, one of the whole questions, because I might answer your question. In the deeper dive on the big projects. And then we'll, so, I don't have these skills, but fortunately, you probably recognize those work here. Okay, this is, you, you, our major capital projects, right, and so, why, uh, so, here's the City Hall project. We know, uh, we started a thirty percent design in, in October of twenty twenty. We recently approved the contract with a hundred percent design. And we're anticipating, um, construction of about a million dollars. And that, that number could climb a little bit. We had a conversation, I was gonna make this part of my air support, but it's just appropriate right now. Our biggest unknown is machining underneath the siding, okay? And we can really get hurt in a change orders if we don't put enough money in the, so.
Are you talking about having to replace this unit?
Uh, yes, and we know there are places in this building, when it rains hard, water gets on the carpet. So if it got on the carpet, it came through the siding and on the sheeting. We know there's some sheeting that we're ready to replace. Right, it's because Miller wanted to do, uh, destructive investigation, uh, this summer and then we have parts of the building opened up, but we're just like, no, no, no. So what Mark and I, the question we came to, let's just do that all of the sheeting back. And so the number we're gonna get is gonna be inflated. But we're gonna have a deduct value for the sheeting and we get to make the call, yeah, that sheeting's good and that area. We're hoping it's thirty percent of the sheeting back and, and a lot of it's gonna get to stay. But we're gonna have a big document that assumes all the sheeting on the whole building is gonna get replaced. And so we're gonna deduct versus a change order. And a change order is where we can get harm and not control problems. So I just want you to understand that.
Quick question, um, the thirty percent design and the hundred percent design that is still being, is in the project.
Correct.
And so, do we, the eight million is not, so do we need to consider that five hundred is something we need to fund? Or are we?
The five hundred is, that's.
But we are.
Those are, the only thing that I need to consider, this, this eight mil, you know, you hope, when we go out and did, we'll know what the number really is. And, uh, and we just, this last year, hey, we, we had a borrowing on City Hall. We just paid it off. Um, and, and our enterprise fund, general fund is gonna have to pay, seven, Noah's had a great little our enterprise funds, because they're housed in this building, can pay a proportion of these payments, this payment. And, uh, so this is two to four percent today, borrowing, what we do, two or a little better even. Like, you know, on twenty-year borrowing. We just paid off a twenty-year mortgage from City Hall. I'm thinking it's, you know, we wait till we save up the money. When I first took office six years ago, this project was three million. Estimated three million, that's how much construction. If we waited another five years, then, you know, the cost, the. Then, you know, the cost, we'll, we'll save enough money in doing it now and borrowing versus escalation in, in strike by boss.
Are those percentages to say that we get when we did the original borrowing at City Hall?
Probably. It, it's an allocation that the, that the state audit is the plot off.
That's why I've tested it, so the state audit is bought off, you know, people.
Yeah, so, next slide please. And this is the Vettel, uh, Lincoln Roundabout Project, we're kind of sharing with you and this information is dated. I think we're down to about, because of how our budgets were performing. We're, we're shy of maybe a little less than four hundred thousand dollars right now. And so remember we gathered all of our other. Uh. Traffic impacting dollars for planning and, and supplemented this project and we needed to order this by end and. To, and, and so we got this year covered for the design. For the construction next year, we needed to come collect another eight hundred thousand and we, we have. Development activity, impact fees didn't drive that much money into our, into our coffers, we need to figure something out. That number is, is about half that now, so, so this slide is great. Uh, we go to the next slide. Uh, Bay Street Pedestrian Path, I don't think, I need to dive and opt for this length in our last couple of weeks. And, and, you know, just recognizing. We have enough green money in our coffers to cover the right way, we're going to construction like in two years from now. It's, this is relying on future. You know, three to five years on historical numbers, we're getting way beyond historical numbers right now. It could end up being three years of, of our future recalls, so we might. If, if everything works perfectly, we might have two years from now have done here, that's all of this, but. The plan, using historical, it's a three year, three to five year. Where the rates are collected to get to that end number, provided the uh, the construction. Uh. It's coming, you know, where we have to stay.
So I recall that, and then, uh, first I, maybe, there was a lot of, there was some discussion about harvesting that, or is it part of funding?
That is, that is, so yes, we only identify, when it comes into construction. Our park plan has the capital and we would be able to parse out. Potentially, that'll be a policy decision you guys make is. We're going to draw from here, here, to a plan, it will be eligible for part, part eight, you're correct. Once you approve that park plan and put that project in there. That we can move on. Okay, next slide. Uh, well eleven, uh, I think we talked a little bit this. We just got this loan yesterday that was approved, you'll contract it becoming senior or future county. And we have finished the design and we believe. There's a five million dollar need here and we'll, we'll, that's my thing of borrowing. Paid from connection service. And, and our rates, our rates. Here we go, here at the bottom. Operating fund will pay for seventy-five percent of it and capital facilities and the reason that if that split is that way. Is that well eleven replaces three existing wells, so it's provide, so existing customers. Seventy-five percent of capacity is the existing customer group and it's going to provide twenty-five percent in new capacity. In that period, in that service area of the city. Next slide. Uh, well thirteen. We've uh, and this one is uh, squat. You know, it's, it's going to serve existing customers twenty-five percent and it's a new source for seventy-five percent, so. Primarily going to be, if we do borrowing on this, or actually we had one borrowing, add another borrowing to it. You can, well, foster is frustrating, we have development happening and we're collecting connection charges. If this goes on a year or two. We're going to have a significant amount of that, but what goes on these projects, yeah, we're forward on right now, so. Um. Yes, operation will possibly buy water from River Two to West Sound. Um, but not the end of the earth, we're collecting more, dropping gene or connect, collect another, big connection charter.
It's not really much, it's to make sure that we have sufficient water to support the growth.
Yes.
Still collecting these connected feeds for itself. So like regardless, we, worst case, we buy the parent of the reservoir.
Where we can't move forward is where we've met up for more time, it's the reservoir, the booster pops through the back and forth. Uh, yeah, we can buy water, but the neighboring jurisdiction can't provide us fire. So we've got to have reservoirs, that's why McCormick would build that one reservoir. So I, I, we're, we're all version, well, thirteen, I didn't want to do it, we've got uh. Another at least six million that we, so here we go. Noah's number here. And we've got a slide at the end of capital of all of this, so go ahead and the next slide, I think we'll, we'll. Uh, part two, here we go. So we, this is a dip, we believe that there's another five million dollars in need. We put five million into it, or not, we can advance uh, the construction any farther without uh, foster base on. Next slide. We're in a pump station, that uh, project has grown significantly because. Of skills that have been happening in the city town and uh. I think it's ecology is requiring, is needing to build a much bigger holding tank. Um, below sea level, it's expensive. So we will be in construction next year. Um, and we're about seven point six million dollars. Uh, now, the nice thing about the site, water. We're already through new connection charters. Okay, and we built a more formic one and two, this is the, there's some other smaller upgrades. And the city south, or excuse me, the, the creek area need to happen. Uh, but this is the biggest animal we have left to conquer. And our sewer utilities are pretty good shape and I, I feel better about the finances of our sewer utility than our water utility. And that's why we're starting to have some conversations about the water system connection partners, so. Uh, anyway, it's about seven point six million dollars down.
Good question, Rob, and you can all use presenting the different borrowings and the split of payment.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a base assumption that we're going to have a steady rate of growth for the next, in this case?
Those twenty years. Pretty dang conservative.
Well, I understand, but you know, will we get? Four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year with just this project, GFC, do we have enough building projected that we will pay there?
I, I don't have staff here to support, but I. But I know it's very conservative, Nick gives me numbers up here. And Noah's down over here and he's usually serving here and we're using Noah's numbers.
He makes me the numbers that Noah gave him on the bottom. Is letting would change to pay the law.
Correct.
He's not saying we have these funds, he's just saying.
No, my, my question is, is that he's projecting for CFC for twenty-five thousand a year.
No, he's saying, right, he's saying that's what we need.
That's right. And John's question.
I want to make sure that.
That's correct, correct.
At some point if building stops, then that percentage, obviously.
Yeah, he's paying the payments now, we're still getting paid, sorry, those are. Detailed questions that we'll need to get answered before we do any borrowing, that, yes, here, here's, here's, here's historical. Here's today and we need to be able to make that debt service payment off historical, not off to, you know, pay the market, absolutely.
But the other thing I'm assuming is the CFC charges were all, if it really just crease something, increase. I mean, those are.
I just thought, wait, no.
Different changes.
Yes, I don't, I don't actually.
Yeah, you know, he's presented four or five different projects here, all of which have borrowings, all of which some. Other repayments from the CFC, so I just. We're, are we comfortable with putting that much? Thank you, continuing to grow the city.
You're spot on, John, and that's a picture that's got to come out. I think we're going to do that more.
I'm sure what you're saying, when we, when we're faced with a borrowing for this project, we're.
Yes, I'm giving you, here's all the projects, figures worth they're going to cost and we have to solve all these red things. And at the end of this presentation, we're just a couple of slides away, I've got a summary. So we'll go to the next slide, there it is. And then along one slide away. And so if we did everything that I described with borrowings, our general fund. Would need to support that, and this is mostly City Hall, hundred forty thousand dollars. The water operating, five thirty-nine. Water capital fund, six fifteen for a million one for all of those wells. You've got sewer operating, you've got sewer capital, we're nearly known. And then we have, uh, this is the, if we went borrowing that million dollars, this is what the debt service on that million dollars would be. Coming from that stormwater operating fund, which really doesn't. Probably would happen, you know, or if it did, it would, we would be trying at doing nothing else other than making that service paid for twenty years. That's not going to solve the stormwater problems in that community, so, all right. I'm going to borrow five minutes of your time to get to the, the community center, it's a one pager. Because Beck asked me, how are we going to pay for that community center? That's a good question and I, it is a crystal ball exercise. And, and here we go, all right, I just want to identify what we have and what we want to be. Slide up so I get the whole, I think we all know this is the community center, oh, okay, we give you eight, nine, or twenty. So, we know, we know this project is estimated to be one million dollars, okay, we don't have the design completed. We've got twelve million from the public, the public facility. So when we went to construction, we need to raise eight million dollars, okay? We have a challenge, because in this twelve million dollars, I have a million dollars for real estate activity. Okay, which is right here. We have appraisal, the three point nine, I can assure you, we better not work two. And Sean and I have had multiple meetings with the bank. And we're going to, we're not going to give this number, but we're going to be pretty close, not too far. As a matter of fact, I got, we have this, this isn't the million, this isn't, this is a million two. Worth three hundred thousand or so, sure, I've got a. Another million request out there, I don't feel as good about this one here and it's not. I just don't know, I'm going to know on the line. Uh. This is, you know, the legislature is a very public process, this appropriations. Derek had this committee and it's all secret world, it's not happening. So I, I just don't have, I, I just, I can't look you in the eye and say, I'm confident I did this. I thought I was going to get seven hundred thousand dollars, I just really got a million two, kind of warmines. Uh, so. To acquire that property, I'm hoping I've got. Uh, a surplus because I've got this and then I'm going to be able to take. Some of these dollars could go back to here, okay? If I'm not so lucky, we're going to have to figure out how to come up with a few hundred thousand dollars, okay? That's, that's what I know today about that possibility, slide down if you could, to the bottom of the page, so. I got cap, I have to, to go back, so this is the pitch for construction, it's construction, okay? I just got state capital dollars, for me to go back to this well, I have to spend a million two that I can. They're not going to give me more money until I perform on what I previously said, I said I was going to do by the real estate. I can't believe, to be honest, that I got proper real estate acquisitions, because they're really tough yet, but. Josh and I worked very hard on this and I'm greatly appreciating now coming over now. Um. When I go back to Derek's appropriation process, which I, where the integrated vacation are. Through the Biden administration, it's going to be an annual process. Once I have the real estate and I have a sexy picture. I think I'm going to be much more successful even for a bigger chunk of those dollars. Remember looking for eight million dollars, okay, I've had conversations with that regional library. And I'm not in my brackets, this and that, but it is what it is. Um. They just, there's a pot of dollars, eighteen million dollars is what the laser switcher has been putting the last few. Sessions uh, in for libraries in this project. I can't access that money, but they can, okay? They asked for one point six for still where they all, and that's in script right there. Typical awards are about two and a half million. Jill has pledged to me, they think they can raise globally with their foundation, another two and a half million dollars. But a million of that, they're going to need for their tenant payments to put books and furniture and everything in the library. So that's four million of the. It is the library's pledge in three, now, the odd thing is, I've got this twelve million dollar guarantee. And they're going to put five million dollars into it, but they're just adamant, they don't want to own the real estate that they're investing in. They want to be a tenant, they don't want anything, they were wanting any real estate. So. I hope that's not a deal killer, I keep pushing this through, I can't, you know, in, 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 in the municipal world. I can't get agreements. That I don't own the, the real estate for and, and. They just did it for still where they, they don't own that, that's, it's that's always with it. So Jill's going to confirm that they don't need to own the real estate, but her board is really. Uh, there's no, I'm not saying that they, they just don't own any real estate, for why? I'm just, I'm just communicating that, that we can, they could need. You know, a, a, obviously a long-term tenant in that building, but they don't seem to want to be, have to create a, I, I would like condominiumized building. And they have their expenses, we know ours. And then, I didn't just, that, that piece of the building is off, so.
In, in the federal, your expectation dollar, it's not that it's gone, so.
Right.
We use that the dollars for improvements in the work, we have, yeah, we have a lease long enough to test products.
And so that, they may have got a twenty or thirty year lease with us to, to check that box, so. It just seems, it seems odd to me that they don't want to have ownership from me that they put millions of dollars into. So our delta, so if they raise four, we're looking to four. I think I can get pretty close and, and I have, I think there's other opportunities that I haven't yet explored because I'm so. Hyper focused on the real estate acquisition and I can't, you know, I'm just going to be honest. The bank has this, you know, we're a little nervous about, and I heard from you guys. How do you assure the bank's going to move forward and, and they're just as concerned is. Well, if we commit and we start building, how do you know you're going to, you don't have, because I shared this document with them. You don't have these things solved, I said, I know, but I did three months and I did this and I got this, I said. I'm pretty good at this, I, 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 I know what I can do and what I can do and. I'm actually confident I can raise this money. And, and I think we're going to need to look at our, our LTAC dollars. You know, probably not all of them, but a good chunk of them for the, for the operational costs for the community center. And, and, um, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a lawful use and, um. Because we've got Kingston costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and they give the disneying away and many aspects. But I think we have to use that as a, as a wish case scenario, but that was here. Property, so I wish I had concrete answers, I don't. This is going to peek into my crystal ball.
Yeah, and I'm interested in how the things, and things are definitely progressing on that front and there's, there's not a question in my mind that it's that big. Holy simple, so we've had these talks, so I think as a council, we, we, they spent a lot of time, a lot of money, they're over a million dollars into this already. Of course, they want certain assurances, as we can serve the citizens, so kind of the next step is they're going to kind of give us their timeline. We obviously have a timeline and these things are going to, you know, cross over and then I think we can start to create plans to. To create additional insurance on both sides and coordinate that timeline, so, um, I think things are progressing very well and. we've got more to come, but our appreciation, their candidness, their openness, their honesty, it's great, it's.
And when you say for you, of this project, me, this project, this community center, it's that big, it's important.
Yep, that's exactly right, that's exactly right.
And that's actually, that's actually right. I mean, think about, you know, just.
You're preventing, from a brand perspective, protecting their brand, you know, as they go out, and they're already starting to look at what, what other facilities are closed down. But they're gonna need, it's a big, big deal. So for them to continue this forward shows their intentions. Because they, they would not run down this road and run the risk of, right? There's no more to go, this all has to get papered, but up their intentions are, are cheap.
Let, we've seen all of these capital projects that we need to do. And we've seen their costs involved and potential borrowing. And, and, and some of those, we have to do, Marina Falls Station, there's no question. We have to do well, there's no question. I'm very supportive of the Sydney South Theory in doing what we need to do to bring that up to reasonable standards for that community. But to me, it's like, um, do we put a drone on Mars and put it up and down? Or, or do you think, I mean, it seems like there has to be money for all of it. You have to look at, at the whole thing. Uh, then you have to understand, the community events center, it's that thing, the economic driver that will be that will help us support these other things. It just seems overwhelming when you look at all of these things, and you're going, how can we do that? I, I'm not sure how we do it, but I, I believe that we need to do all of that. And I don't see anything here that is out of the ordinary or superfluous that are being asked.
Which is exactly why we need this holistic approach. We can't look at this in one project at a time, then lose sight of the other, the other need. So our projects have a very comprehensive, you know, this is a five, ten, twenty year plan, and understand how this is gonna work. We just need project to your project there, and we're not gonna be attention, how is it flexible, and how's the purchase gonna work?
Yeah, and that was the purpose of that summary slide, so that everybody can go, yeah, I'm, you know, I'm sure, and it was purposeful. Wow.
Because it, it appears to me that we're going to end up in the same position where we're trading off. And that is, you know, do we have to give money back? There probably would be, I mean, we were, it gets the wall up that way. And we made it happen, and we may find ourselves in a similar situation with some of the other projects.
I totally agree with your comment, the thing that I really, I mean, this kind of a project is invested in our fighting for future. The results of this project is gonna help generate additional funds, it's gonna help support being a hundred. We heard on the vessels of this project, but I, I'm excited to work out whether it's gonna be, you know, we're wealthy, and we can do whatever we want, or see if this helps us, we don't have to worry about the late build tomorrow. I think there's gonna be a benefit to it, so I, I agree with you.
Fred, did you have something?
Yeah, and just to bring it out right there. With, you know, the, the first slide, those things are all happening in the next couple of years. The nice thing about, you know, while we're talking with the bank, we're, we're likely gonna need to close the end of the year, shortly after the first year on real estate. But the bank has to design the building opening. That is gonna take on the inside, through the bar. Yeah, maybe five, three to five years, okay? So I've got a couple of legislative sessions to assemble eight million dollars. You know, so I, I, while all of this makes me nervous, but I know what Josh and I want, you want, that's what you want me on doing, is, you know, solving these big problems and fighting this fight.
Fred, did you have something?
I appreciate that, it's because I think originally, the expectation was that the event center would be built first, that it's that back, with that, and then private development would happen. In that order, and now I don't think it's that order at all.
No, it is, because, because of our, the rest, the residential part of the caring structure, it will be phased, I believe. And the residential's gonna happen first. The bank's gonna happen second, and then we're, we're ready, because the bank has to get out of the way.
Well, now, we talked about the events that are being planned for all the other developments. So I think it's a whole process.
But the whole thing is, but then, yeah, we can't start our, our, our community center until they're done with the bank, like you're.
Like, I just think it's sweet for people to realize that what order may happen.
And I think that the, 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 we started this, it all started at this Alice's point, basically. And the initial design, we saw that in the library building. So, I think there was some.
It's, it's definitely, yeah. And you're gonna be thrilled with what you're gonna see next month, most. I know, it is, um, like obviously, it's, it's, um, it's not, acquiring peeled timbers and things of that nature, and making things look old, are costly. So we just have to accept that. And, and the, the concepts are phenomenal, that, that, and they're gonna be shared at the work study next month. And I think I'm really excited for, um, it's sustainable products that are made in the Northwest. Uh, and it's, it's really, it's really simple stuff. And I know we're running about ten minutes over.
We're running about, uh, twenty minutes.
Okay, okay, and we have a break, skip it now?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to check with folks and make sure, you know, Cindy or some other folks, do you have any questions, or there was a lot of information? Anything else you'd like to share or ask before we change topics?
We're gonna kind of get into more writers, that's next, right?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so the next agenda item, if no one has anything else on, on all, all that you've heard to inform the future conversation. Uh, we can either take a brief break now, or we can go through and work with your guiding principles for, uh, your near and DEI principle. What would you like to do? Would you like to support that hedge?
Yeah.
Or the hedge, okay.
And that's, so the purpose of this was, we created this a couple of retreats ago. And many organizations have, uh, diversity and equity statements. And I thought, and it's, we can leave this alone, but I thought it would be very appropriate to have a statement in this guiding principle that dealt with the, uh, equity, that, that. I just got in on it.
Alright, so, these are great guiding principles, I was, I've been reading them, and it, it sounds like, uh, what's on the agenda is for you to explore and generate ideas for the DEI principle. And so, are we really borrowing one, are we honoring the past? Like, I'm living in the past, are we in connection with outside partners? Will this project, we're actually take us, make us proud? And so, uh, you know, are we all good to generate some ideas on another principle? I'm not sure if this is, we talked about this in the past, or if this is new for you to think about?
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's dive in.
Okay, great, well, I'm gonna flip chart, if that's okay? And just see if we can just explore some, some concepts or ideas. I know, these look really short and to the point, really clear to speak. So, what would you like your principle to be at the, at the city?
Just joking, you know, when we first talked about this some time ago, I thought, well, would it be, um, easy enough, maybe it's too easy, take the guiding principle that we have, and here to insert some language into that? And for me, equity is, is kind of the key word. And, and maybe that's a company event, where you might use that word. But I think equity in its broadest sense, for me, includes diversity, and inclusion. And, and can we pull the use of the word equity into one of those, just in calls? I don't know that we can or not, but I've been trying to think about how we could, but that's just why I did.
So you like to hear the word equity included, that's a really key word.
Right, because I think if, if we, if we dive into this too much, we're gonna have a rather long bullet statement on equity and inclusion, that really is a bit, uh, shorter, pretty, or bold.
Well, they're building equity, yeah.
As like, yeah, exactly.
Well, I'm thinking of, I appreciate what you're saying, but I, diversity deserves all, all the recognition, so. There's a project that we worry to support, equity is the virtue.
Okay.
So, hearing adding to what you already have, or just creating a new one that includes diversity, equity, and diversity?
I almost, and I appreciate the, the coverage. I think the, if you have to pick one of those three, I like the sort of inclusion part, because I think that implies uh, that you're including all the different, uh, populations. Um, equity in some ways is a buzzword, which, which is better now, but I think inclusion, for me, uh, sounds maybe less directed to some people, um, or just more.
I think they're all, uh, they're all, they all must be very different. So I think now, the whole place is all through those that are, you know, are we. I knew. Right, it's another bullet point. It's a difference. Yeah, it's exactly diversity and inclusiveness. Are, are we being equitable in every respect?
Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's an informing decision, exactly.
Well, it's one of the criteria that we, we value, obviously, with.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I don't care if we take one of them or two, they're all very different.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's DEI informing decisions. So am I hearing that you all like all three, equity, diversity, and inclusivity?
Yeah.
So the DEI concept, and also hearing that you'd like it to inform decisions?
Well, isn't that somewhat of what the ball we're doing for now?
Cindy?
Looking at in reference, doing projects, see that the two, that's gonna do that. And one of those things that needs to be considered is equity and diversity.
Yeah, our decision is improving the ER.
Are you saying improving ER? Wait, please don't make a question there. I don't think, I don't think, I don't like improving. That's too broad, they're guiding. I like the guiding that you were saying, because that then is, I think that's more inclusive. How do we, how do we improve, how do we know that we're?
The guiding, where is it, make sure all.
Anyway, I don't like it, it's not.
I, I prefer it's good point. Where inclusive will be all, I mean, it's, we need to include the whole city to the extent we can.
But that's how.
Why they just work, be a, it's all love diversity.
Yeah, I don't think you're saying it doesn't merit excluding the diversity and inclusion.
No, you're talking about the guiding part, I'm just saying.
You're like guiding versus.
Right.
Where are we guiding?
It's guiding us, it's, it's guiding the citizens. That's part of the, just part of what we're talking about.
And you could also ask.
I think our, the reason of ours is having a lot to do with weakness. That, that's part of what we would have to be considering, our reason.
But DEI isn't guiding us, we need to guide decisions to move the needle with the guidance of us. Right, if we want to change, just take, for example, here, our, our, our staff, our comparison. If we wanted to make sure that we're truly diverse, right? We have to make decisions that allow diversity to happen, right? We are, we are impacting and affecting diversity in our state. Well, right, just by saying diversity impacting us, we need to make decisions that affect outcomes.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Sure, I said, we are guiding that outcome, not the opposite. Decisions we make is, we want to have a positive outcome, and we have the responsibility to hold, right? And so, we sit down and do the monthly.
Okay, that changes the statement, that if you read these, the statement is, because it says, are we raising the bar? So then our decision, are we owning the past, but not living in it? Are we building mentions of outside partners for this project, make this proud? I forgot what was the wording just was. Will this decision have a positive impact on diversity, equity, and inclusion? That's what we're looking for, we're looking for a positive.
I like that.
I do too, now.
To me, a decent purchase, a reminder, we sit up, we look at, what you say, that is the decision that you're achieving, so.
So will the decision have, will this decision have a positive outcome for the project?
It's very similar to that first bullet point, but we're specific. So raising bar, that's very general, but here, we're, we're bringing deeper, more, are we, are we raising bar?
So, I'm just gonna pause, will this decision have positive outcomes or impact? Impacts to DEI?
Oh, well, this is maybe, this is asking us, uh, to consider these bullets for assessing.
They are for your.
Right.
So how do you wanna, so is that the sentence, is that a question? Then like some of these others, will this decision lead to positive, is it impacts or outcomes?
Well, hopefully it's all good at the end of the day, but.
But, but you can always hope for impacts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing impact, I'm hearing outcomes.
Your best.
That, or we're increasing, right, is increasing ER. We have increased diversity, we have increased that, we have increased.
Will this, this decision have a positive impact?
Over the previous decision.
I like. Have a positive impact on DEI? And then, I'm hearing you add another concept, Sean. Do you wanna add that in addition to impacts?
Just, I have to say, these are kind of brief and succinct, so I don't know if we want.
Yeah.
No, we, we are really intent of really a lot of what we're.
I just, so, but if we just, what does that mean, it impacted you? Right, I mean, impact you could go, yeah.
So it's a positive impact?
Yeah, positive.
Positive impact. Positive impact. Will this decision have a positive impact on DEI?
On DEI or student?
DEI, and we will spell that out, diversity, equity, inclusion. And then, is I heard on the city, or just?
I think.
Is that assumed?
We should say that's wrong.
Okay, I can say that. Well, this.
I'll prepare it short.
Is there some, please?
No, I, I think it is, but it has more.
Impact was the word for diversity?
That is, this is your time to talk about CARES, what there, there's many. Or, you know, human, uh, or.
Well, you guys want to see it, the, the work we're doing at CARES, the, within a kind of like, it's, the equity work is limited to land use and transportation. It, it's not an overarching thing with equity. You know, in, into, as Sean said, it has many meanings to a lot of people, and that was focused specifically how we can, um, address it within the CPCs for land use and transportation. And I, I didn't bring it with me, but I can email it to use some language that was proposed to go to the. And, and it's pretty, it's pretty broad ranging, because all of our. And and it's pretty, it's pretty broad ranging because all of our jurisdictions, a lot of the county. Brearton and Bainbridge Island all have committees working on diversity and equity. I'm not sure where Paul's group was on that, so we didn't wanna put anything in the C P Ps that. Limited the work these jurisdictions are doing.
And everybody might, or I have to work. Everybody looks at it a little differently, and if we put it in county by policies. Then we're all bound by that, and so I think we need broad broad stroke here. And then each one of us, you know, any of the comprehensive plans can be more restrictive. But Bainbridge Island's ideas may not be our ideas. And so if we put Bainbridge Islands in the county by policies, then we're all bound by that. And so we we need an element of statements, but it's broad.
Right, and when we, just to give you the week a little bit, when we look at the demographics of Port Orchard. When G G L O was working on the down plan, I believe that. Um whether it's at over seven percent of our population is Asian and our African American population is like three percent. Whatever, and within our Caucasian population, thirteen percent of that was Hispanics. So that's what our group looks like here. When you get to Pulse, they're very, very weighted, um their minority population is Native American. So we're going to have different. Each one of our jurisdictions has a little different flavor than any to the rest.
Not to retreat, let there just kind of re-read that, it's the arguing reason of our, are we ordering the pass, are we building connections? Maybe is it are we positively impacting first? First, it seems like this decision doesn't seem to follow, which is more of a general, are we positively impacting? Think the flow with just the way that. You know, the verbiage there. And. I guess whatever on that last point that that struck.
What was cross interaction?
Just, what does it make us proud? That's what I read on here, that we can almost just eliminate that basically. Point, I don't know.
Well, why not?
I just hope.
I think you made, yeah.
And if we do all that and all of that, I think pride is a. You should, you should be proud.
Well, let me just confirm, and then we can move on to that. I'm I'm agreeing agreement that you like this new way of framing it, that maybe we'll spell out D E I, but are we positively impacting? Are, do we still want decisions? Are, no, are we positively impacting diversity equity inclusion? That's it, that's it, everyone all had, no, does anyone not agree with nice and system? Okay, great. And then do we want to have a discussion on other elements of your other principles?
Now's the time.
Now's the time, now's actually break time. Or this time.
They, yeah, just. But.
Right, and Sean proposes to remove the bottom line.
So hearing a proposal to remove the bottom line and replace it with this noting. That maybe this wasn't needed, anyone?
I just think the word proud is so subjective, like, okay, it could actually be offensive, you know, just what. What we might take action on, right, which we do all the time.
Yeah.
It might be. Seven of us proud, but it might be someone else proud, I don't know, it's just.
Anyone, anyone want to keep the final principle?
I personally am likely to agree with you because it definitely.
That's gonna be something. Replace it, even small, just replace that one, that one, okay. Got it, so hearing to replace this project, make us proud with?
Yes.
This new one, okay. Great. Good work. Otherwise, you can see that the wall's not. We're gonna have to scroll, all right? Well, nice work, uh I say you've earned a break. Let's see, what time, is there a clock on the? Oh, there we go. So it's ten o'clock, how about we uh take an eleven minute break and come back at ten fifteen? And we'll get started with uh your long term board session, so coffee, donuts? All right, okay, so I don't know how we did it, but we are ahead of schedule. You did such good work, here are the principles that we may have some time. So I'm just gonna uh send you off for the next hour or so, and so uh. We will be discussing the agenda items. Here are these topics that you've all provided. And uh and then we're gonna give another break and then come back and prioritize those. And so uh we have about an hour to discuss these items, so till about ten. Or excuse me, eleven fifteen or twenty, so we're just gonna go in order if that's okay. And there's one other item that's not, you can't see it on the screen, or you're trying to look. At your agenda's uh transitory, transitory accommodations, so that'll be on there as well. Any questions or comments? Yeah, it's on the next page, so you can see it on your agenda there. Any questions, comments, concerns about this next agenda item? Everyone, okay?
It's okay, six minutes on each.
Yeah, you know, just see, I mean, there's a lot here. So. Some, yeah, hopefully we'll do a check in and we can triage if we need to. So we'll just start out with the T I B.
So I guess one thing.
Yeah.
We're not prioritized, so one, does this item need the list? I think it's fish and cut meat, you know, and and then if it does, then for a jointing through you guys at the end of the second part. We're prioritized, so if we do the video review or develop the next budget, we know which priority, that's what we're.
If that first item was mine, I tried, that's it to be on there, huh? And it's not T I B, it's T V P. Oh, what is that? Okay, transportation benefit district is currently. And one of our items later down is preservation and maintenance on streets and. We have a T V P. And we have instituted a twenty dollar car tax. If we move that to a valid measure, and that's to be two hundred percent. On sales time, that would generate about a million dollars a year. And so is that something we wanna consider? And we get about two hundred thousand dollars a year from the car tax. Things to think about is, as our population increases, that car tax revenue will go up. We also wanna consider that gas tax revenue is decreasing. I think we saw, and part of this is COVID related, but part of it is just fuel efficiency of the electric vehicle. Our gas tax revenue was down about fifteen percent this last year. So so we're seeing a a shift in those dollars and. Is this something we would wanna consider, and we as a council, I'm sure we would wanna consider that that our. South Kids Act is not typically supportive of fablet nature, uh taxing nature. However, the city of Port Orchard is probably a little more.
Progressive.
Progressive than than the rest, than the rest of South Kids Act. And by putting a sales tax on. We're then receiving revenue from everyone who uses our streets. And with the car tab, we're putting all of the maintenance of our streets on our citizen. And I guarantee most of the people going at Bethel and on Cedric and on Tremont and on Pottery. The majority of them, I would say, are not with us, not city residents. The city residents go out onto those fingers, you know, to the homes, but uh. So that was just something that we started discussing at transportation. Um and so we just wanted to bring it forward to this group.
I think it's a great idea, when we talk about, you know, wanting to do more for our roads, we hear from our constituents and we practice. Don't have any good, it's twenty dollar hard tab, it was a step in the right direction, but it's. It's just definitely not enough, and so I think for the last two, those who are the voters and book it. Here's an opportunity that's really short of us news, and at your point, and I think where. For Orchard, if we communicate correctly, you're you're absolutely spot on right now, you got, you know, a a few thousand people. Residents that are actually paying this this car tab. Oh, yeah, tens and hundreds of thousands of people using our roads, so if we could. You know, reach out to them and their participation in this, we would cost our citizens down. Which we're spreading amongst a much larger group of people.
Well, it's our our citizens imposing it. But it's the people that live in the greater area, they don't pay it to them, they don't have a lot of countries.
That's anyone who's shot.
Anyone that's shot here, anyone that comes raising a boat and moors it up and needs downtown, anyone that invests business here, absolutely.
If there's been money.
Or even has.
They have the hands we want.
Right, but our but our region retail for this office is within our city, right? Right?
Yeah, I I like it, I agree.
That would be, so this valid measure would be a replacement, the twenty dollar tax.
I think that's what we would have to say, we'd have to say, and I think we all need to recognize that. The twenty dollar for the car cap, the license cap is not a popular cap.
No. So it'd be a replacement.
It's absolutely, it's it it addresses one of our huge guiding principles.
No, for sure.
So we wanna keep that on the list if we wanna. Take a look at that going forward, okay?
But it has, it would need a good amount of money. To have plenty of education about that.
What what we have to remember is if we do that, the city itself cannot promote. We would have to have a separate um citizens group.
We just speak to the facts of the the nature, we cannot, we cannot advocate for a guess what.
So we have to call it something like a replacement. Right, and then you do use a replacement, right, I think there's a lot of details that we go into it into.
I think before you say, ask them to do it, this is what you're going to see.
I'd be careful with the word replacement, I think that could be very disjunctive.
There's much larger than that.
Yeah.
It would allow us to stall Bethel, Cedric, and the City South, those three spines, major spine. But each one of them are twenty, fifteen million dollar projects, so if we put a hundred and twenty million dollar. Bond measure, you know, and it's paid for from the sale factor.
The other thing, when you, when, when we move this forward, if that's a decision. Um the sales tax is good for changes, so you have to reload in ten years. What was the percentage?
There's a bit of a difference in what I heard, though, what I heard Rob say was.
Right.
What I'm assuming here is an ongoing support for the tenure period. Now. You know, there's a lot that we would have to communicate themselves, but. I've always found that if people understand where the money is going, they're more likely to support it, to try and.
Right.
You know, when you start talking about. That we're handling this three different streets. If you talk about working right with companies, takes a picture of the project, it might say that this is part of the city, but the other part care much.
And actually, you want a reverse program that.
Yeah, and that's what makes me a little nervous about replacing.
Yeah.
What I would suggest, number one. I appreciate what Sean said about what we can and can't do, and we can do a lot, a lot before we decide for a validation. We can use city resources to survey and communicate and find out if people support something of this nature. Prior to, okay, it was before, but on the ballot, once we say that, then we've got this information over, but.
Right.
And I don't wanna get into the weeds, I like the concept of this, but I think there needs to be more discussion.
Okay.
Us as people and the community. As to what, what are you interested in supporting?
Right, John.
And having.
Right.
And having each other.
Right, and I had thought, just. That um Heather moved it up to the school, although they're not six thousand. That they get the citizen group together and. Um, you know, you do a lot of grassroots things, develop your plan, and then you already have a body. But I think for our purposes today, it sounds to me like we're all supported.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of anyone. In wins, proud.
We haven't explained why we wanted to.
That's why you do the twenty dollar car tab. Yeah, okay, so let's uh.
Well, I'm.
Say what I.
It is an interesting part of the script. So that's here, you would have to spend ten thousand dollars a week. That's your break, that's twenty dollars.
Okay, I think the public, the problem the public has is when you do things like this. Is the mistrusting that the money is gonna be used for what you say it's.
Could be the most basic.
Why you gotta have a question?
Yeah, what they're saying.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do this.
So. So I'm hearing a yes on future discussion, and we'll add this to the notes, you know, just noting that, you know, we're potentially shifting. Uh twenty dollar car tax, still up for discussion for uh to. Allowing people external or from the greater area to uh pay a a sales tax, and that could. Affect locals as well, but it would be a great shift and to improve roads, and so. We're not sure about the replacement verbiage, but uh you'll talk about it later. Anything else you wanna just highlight in the notes? Okay, are you okay moving on? Yes?
Why don't we jump down to the fourth bullet, street preservation maintenance?
Is that's.
In a title.
Well, and so is uh. The next one, the this one, because I think. Again, that was one of mine was yesterday, because I didn't commit the timeline for water and transportation. And I think we've already kind of talked about that, if if we can. This is a selfish one on my part, because I'm coming off the council, that I I wanted to know that we were starting the process. Which in that fact, which?
We're we're here, she, Rebecca jumped to the first one here. Yeah, we we talked about that buying out land, and it could be part of that solution, it could be part of a number of stations. So thanks, one.
There's only a ten more cycles.
It's just, it's a.
This is what's gonna be useful.
Commitment to the Sydney South.
Right, I what I'm saying is, I think, I think we hit that one.
Yep.
So.
I don't think you just say selfish, because, you know, I'm an angelic.
No, I totally love hearing to. The street preservation and maintenance linking to.
It's part of this.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, but you know, something that's back to saying about South Sydney, I. Just about favor the streets. It is not dependent upon that one.
I I think we do, we do, we need to separate someone.
We already did decisions.
Yeah, we we have a million dollars in this current budget.
Oh, I guess.
And we've got a mid-year review, and whether it, whether the number is another half million or another million, easily, we could. The problem is, if it gets too big, it's it's the human resource help to it. Uh but easily, we could deploy another half a million dollars in street preservation in that, but we got the bid. We just wrote a scope of of the paving projects.
Well, in my mind, it's also not only what we can afford, but it's the priority we put off.
Right.
So when you make human resources, sorry. With the limited amount of resources we have, where do we want their step focused on? And that's where we've been prioritized, we want this over that, whatever it may be.
And and long term, I appreciate that, John, but that's why we get there earlier exercise.
No, I appreciate it, you've got a list of stuff we've got. No, I appreciate you got a list of stuff we've got for right now. As we go forward, respecting the list that we have now.
So am I, am I hearing that this is something you want to keep on the list? Or maybe more discussion, street preservation and maintenance? To discuss.
I want to stay on the list. Yeah, I mean, yeah, absolutely, we can't lose sight of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other conversation on street preservation and maintenance? Just that it needs to be done.
Yes, and I just want to give a acknowledgement to Chris Ham, he's doing a really nice job of that. And I think Scott can speak to that with the transportation.
Yeah, I just put a bullet point there, it's used, we have a very comprehensive study on the priority of streets should. Go first.
Okay, so prioritizing.
So we have tools that shows us what. Yeah, Chris, we're using, absolutely.
More of a statement supporting the plan that we have set.
Right, that's, I think that sometime you do a study that's a nutshell, right, so.
None. To be honest, today, tha- that's why we're implementing this. Our heart, it's spinning. The the manpower and resources. We we put significant dollars in this current budget.
Okay. So I hear that we're moving on, I'll just, I'll recap really quickly, uh we already have a million dollars, another vote is coming. Just concerned about city capacity to do these items, but it needs to be done. And then an emphasis on prioritizing the streets and the sequencing of how it would be done. Sorry.
What's the name of the study that we have?
We got, it it scored all first.
Yeah. I'm continuing to refer to the PLS. Yeah, make sure we're doing things. Yeah, in the right order, we are.
Well, but we haven't done anything, so that's why.
Let's just go more.
Yes, so I think you're going to speak to.
So I I had a conference call yesterday on American Rescue Act, a plan. Uh it's actually an American Rescue Plan, I believe I got a title there. Um, I was one of eight mayors, a national participated in a uh conference call with White House staff. For the rules for this, great honor. And what it always reminds me why I participate, whether it's mayor's exchanges or this event. How good we are. And and you can recall, you know, the last presidential administration. Our state was in conflict with the federal government and constantly litigating things. I learned that many certain states right now are doing the same thing with the current administration. And there are states and governors that are confusing to take the money from the federal government, which in turn. None of the cities, so the mayor asking, but my governor isn't going to accept the money, what can I do? And the White House is telling him, nothing you can do. Uh and so, uh. I I advocate, I mean, the broadband questions were asked, John. Uh many, you know, when they share with us too, this is the. These, we're defining the rules, we can't alter the legislation or the law. And you know, and some of the cities, but I but I I can't use it for this purpose, I want my police part. Well, sorry, that we can't do that. So we have. One of the things that I advocated for in in my comments was. The definition of revenue has not been defined, and I asked it to be broad. So that potentially it's broad, and it's not just our sales back revenue, it's our enterprise funds. Potentially, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in liquid utility accounts. And if it's broad enough, and rules allow it, in which there's there's the right rules, we didn't get the right ones, but we brought it in for it. Potentially, you guys could consider us paying, you know, using it for that methodology. What happened to Kears though, the process was still cumbersome because. He, you know, Beck's, you know, a a a ratepayer had to initiate that process. And so many people that don't pay their bills won't do the paperwork. So Cam, you know, we we're asking for the ability to be flexible, for us to initiate and just take care of it. Whether we get that flexibility or not, we don't know yet, but we're not confident that we can spend the money on it. The other thing, you know, water and sewer, if we got a couple of needs there. In about three weeks, we're going to get the first one point two million dollars or one point one million dollars. Um, and and they're they're building the airplane as a plot, uh so. Hopefully, the rules won't change like we're getting here, it came about each time during the process. Uh and we're trying to avoid that. Um, the other thing, you you know, I I think you guys are getting emails too, I'm getting another calls from the Chamber of Commerce and small businesses. They want more grants. What the indication we were getting from this call yesterday is. They will, we cannot use the money, the problem is, we don't have the bandwidth. And so we would need to hire somebody to process grant, we cannot use any of this money to pay our staff.
Something like we did where we went to.
He has already told us.
Well, I'm using.
Yeah, no, no.
Could we go somewhere else if it was.
I was told that I I believe not, that he has already told me that. If we did that, they would need to hire somebody to.
So it's almost like the problem, once we build your files, it's back on work studies, where we go to understand what.
Yes. So I'm just more to come, I I I really, there's no decision to be made today. Uh I I but uh. We just, we don't know, and I was very, you know, I I had the uh the honor of staying in the process here, part of the process.
To be clear, in my mind, the funding that we're going to achieve, they're struggling to want quite what. That is a different program, that this program.
No, it is not. It is the American Recovery Plan, and it's, we get two bites totaling. Three point two million dollars.
Okay.
So.
So this is separate from the description that's going on about the infrastructure.
Here, yes, there's there's, I I.
The line administrator wants to know.
Here, right, and this cannot be for road, this this pot of dollars cannot be for roads. Um, there were multiple asking that. They can't, they can't change the order of play for it, it's about three distinct buckets. And the one I know that we're going to be able to execute on is sewer and water infrastructure. And there's some possibilities, there's mother stuff. Um, and until we get to rules, I. I'll I'll come back to you, and it'll be two years, and I don't know, we don't know. When it is, we're going to have to step by.
We're getting one point one, but we don't know exactly how we.
Actually, one that one point, one point, one point six, I'm I'm.
So we're getting.
One point six.
We're not sure where we.
Other than probably six, and and the timelines. I'm I'm confident in sure a lot of projects, and there's some other possibilities, and we'll come back, and then next year, we get the other half of that. Yes, from the federal government. No, no, I believe that, we just get, we're going to get, I think what I heard yesterday was. The money, the money in commerce previously for cares, the money came from the Fed and went to commerce. This is going to go to OFM. They won't have any um oversight, and that's making cities smaller than us very nervous. It's all because it's going to be subject to the single, double single audit requirements, and all of a sudden, you did it wrong, and you have to pay it back. Uh so we're getting, fortunately, we have a fabulous group of professionals here, I have no concerns about us following rules.
But there's your pushing, I think we're getting the trip.
We're getting. I believe that is the case.
But we got reimbursement, I believe, last time.
Because because the State Department of Commerce held the dollars, and we had to get a claw from them. This is just, yeah, we're just going to get it, I think, deposit. Because they're asking for bank account information and a DUN's number and other things. But I think it's just going to show up.
All right, well, John, like, you definitely want to talk about this in the future.
Yes.
My, and I'll, is that good? We're going to move on, would you like to recap?
I think, I think we've. Yep, we says we know the rules and uh and and they hopefully they don't change.
Okay, well, I might just recap, so uh it looks like in. In a couple of weeks, while you were on this call with uh the the White House on the national call, and uh it's like. In two weeks, you'll be getting one point six million, and it's two phases, and next year. You'll get another uh portion to equal three point two million, correct? And um you don't have a lot of capacity to pay staff to implement projects.
I can't pay staff, it's a problem.
From these funds, right, and so that's something to discuss. It can't be for roads, but it can't be for sewer or water, you have two years suspended, and you're uh. You know, will you get a check versus reimbursement, it's still yet to be determined, but you think you're going to get a check. Anything else for the notes? No, okay, great. So hazard pay, is that next?
Yep.
And who's going to speak to that? Fred?
We've got, you know, um a employee, Fred Meyer, asking us. To do something about hazard pay, let that consciousness see how, how I've done it. Um in the meantime, Baker Diamond was actually about something. And what Baker Diamond did is I believe they passed the regulations, asking two of their uh companies to actually provide the pay. Um, I just wanted to raise this as a discussion, I didn't make me to write. Some of the employees a letter, asking them to consider providing hazard pay or the assumption that. Pretty um. We uh consistently. Uh it's funny, because I I know making the eyes. And I started for admire the other day, and I think they would just like. A response, so I thought, okay, you know, I'll bring it up and see what the feeling is.
Fred, I have an issue with this. I've read both sides, I was following that, I believe, both same favoritism. And I don't know if you are seeing um how the grocery company responding. And um the market seems to move about whether they could actually stay competitive. Um, and I I think we're doing enough of this now. Don't need to move forward with that, I think that we've got, we're on the S one. We've got um the risks are going down to a degree. If you only do hazard pay for the grocery workers, then play out all of the other public workers. I think uh with all of these programs that we've had, reimbursements and grants and. Um stimulus lines. I I just actually don't think it's the right time to pursue the hazard pay for grocery workers in the community, so I'm not in favor of this. Uh I'm just saying, that's what you're asking for. We all end up paying when you pay somebody. And only have to force a a business to pay for money. The public ends up having to pay for that, I think we're already trying to figure out the balance. I'm not in favor of paying more.
I I thought I heard you ask if we could ask the grocery to consider. Yeah, I don't think, I can't say it's going with.
I would not assign them. I just say.
You reached that first one of the answers.
I'm not disrespectful, but, you know, they're all, they all have bargaining agreements, right? And they have a means to have those conversations today. I just don't think this is a job we need in.
Right. Right.
I think it just opens up a massive door.
Yeah, the administration wants to. Council.
Well, my biggest thing in that, I think, supported, I, my biggest thing, what point may listen. I think it's a lot of of folks that have been out there during this pandemic and learning along the line. I very much appreciate having all the groups for our employees there, so I can look at groceries, but. Equally, I appreciate the folks down at A Harper, when I need to go buy a iPhone with. You know, loaves and whatever else, so where do you draw the line as far as. Everyone's been working during this pandemic. Should give some level hazard pay for another call. I need to just grab one.
And I I wonder the part of it was the stories that they've heard about the additional, um and I don't. Or the uh unemployment, you know, the bonus that some of them got the expenses. So we, by working through the pandemic, which we, I appreciate your efforts, that doesn't seem more eligible. I I could, I can understand that they felt that maybe they were penalized for having worked. Um, I I don't, I'm certainly not in the whole company how they should think about my, but. I I could certainly ask, see, ask them to consider doing whatever they can on that off there. I would see this as a letter, if if you felt. But I did want to promise to this work related. I I feel like we're, you know, eight or ten months behind the curve on that. Uh and, you know, the mayor just said we're at fifty percent vaccination vaccination rate right now, is that climbing? So I would have wanted to have a much more robust conversation, quite some time around now, where hopefully we're on the table.
I'm not, and Sean, sorry, I can't tell you all what you said, but. I'm not sure if it's our place, is that the function of the city government? That that's where I struggle with that, is, you know, is that a state level or is that a. Uh national level, I know it involves unions, it's well beyond.
And what I heard is we are finding, we don't understand the margin of the bottom. And what I've seen in other communities is the past, this grocery people, they close, they close. You lose a grocery store, because if. Now that's sort of not profitable, when they're having to pay.
Well, why don't I, go ahead, Scott, let her recap.
Was it an ordinance?
I'm just going like oversell.
It was, it was more than a letter.
And they have Safeway. I'm not sure.
Was it just limited to grocery?
Well, I think it was, it's like Seattle, it's grocery workers. At score of a certain size, so. More structure, I'm sure you'd be impacted by it, but Safeway would.
Right.
So I'm going to recap and then just see if you want to talk, discuss anymore. Uh, but hearing, maybe this is a minimum for for discussion, that this has been the discussion, that uh. A council member, a council member was requested to bring this in her discussion. But I'm hearing a lot of of people say they're not in favor, uh where do you draw the line, this may not be our function. Uh the businesses are are moving to stay competitive, and so uh. Just reading, yes, I think that's about it. Anything else, hearing no more discussion on this, that. That you're all basically, knowing what you discussed in here, and it's not a role for your.
Well, I'm going to ask you, so I see my name up there of what I said, but I don't see my. I don't see other names or what people have said in other discussions. So I'm wondering if that is a practice that you're just.
You know, I'm I'm not going to move any of the. Yeah, this is more just, um I was kind of keeping tabs, you know, John, Sean. I was just kind of keeping tabs so that I could get from my own mind of who's spoken and what you're all thinking. But absolutely, you know, this is wrong. Organization, but, yeah, I didn't need to do that, okay, okay. Any, anything else on this? Okay, great. So we're going to move on, uh what is the estimated financial commitment and timeline for store water and transportation?
We're to uh, what's the city's role in social?
Who brought it up?
Simply because. I don't know that we as a council have ever sat down and said. Yeah, we want the amount of growth we're getting, I know that we've taken action in our ordinances and our codes. That allows for growth, but I just, you know, have we ever? Just, do we want to see this?
Or do we want to
I can speak to that, maybe I'm not too much, but I feel like we're reacting to what they acquired, it becomes part of growth again today, we're we're proactively finding, some of us have, we don't have a choice.
Right, we are allocated.
Right, we're allocated and so we're trying to create proactive infrastructure that enables us to pay all the pressure that's in my perspective.
And if we're wanting to calm things down, one of the measures, the regional measure that everybody is making sure that growth is paying for growth and that the cost of that growth will you know, we incentivize, we provide incentives and subsidize things, then it'll happen faster than if we make growth pay for it.
But I think that's part of what you're on the page about, plenty of sport. You know, growth is going to occur, we just need to make sure that it's being done. I don't want to say correctly, but with the city's best interest in mind.
Maybe, maybe another question, we've asked this in different ways, if we want additional growth, I'm not saying to do, then I think a path forward would be to take a more proactive stance on annexing additional UGA areas.
Well, we're having a stronger
But it forces us to take more additional growth.
But the UGA, what the population is being held into is not just what is inside of the city, it's what's inside of our responsibility to drive it.
Right, so it's that forestry that occurs at my house.
Right, that's what I'm gonna say, because right now they're gonna start working on the population. As soon as we get them on the CPT, they're gonna start working on the population deployment allocation. And we have jurisdictions that have a building inventory. And they're not willing to take any growth, and they're really focused on that section. We just did the land capacity report, and I don't know that the group has seen it yet, but I know Nick has talked to the mayor and I about it. And with our current zoning and to calculate the formula they used, we would be, our city, our land capacity could take on an additional 24,000 population.
Over
over the 15 that we are right now.
Yeah, over what?
There was, I asked that, I, what was the time period in the, it's not a time
I thought it was a, I thought it was a burning point.
But no, this, no, this has nothing, our iron capacity has nothing to do with the timeframe. This is what, this is what our zoning says, this is what our code says. This is the physical land we handle, these are, these lots are developed, these are
There's no UGA expansion in our city.
Right, but we could, we could be required to 24,000, and so we've done a pushback, that means we can tweak the formula. And so that's one of the things that growth comes up in my because once we get the marine compensation back, once we get the roads, once we get all this infrastructure funded and the academy comes, we still have to maintain. And there's a significant expense in maintaining it too. And sometimes you just kind of create a Ponzi effect. And so it was just, we got a lot of growth going on, we made a lot of decisions, and I don't think there was ever just a big down in chat about it.
Yeah, and one thing I appreciate that we've done and are continuing to do with some of these discussions today is to try to you know, look at this group, listen to you, right, and I, some of the things that we've done is we've been looking for responsible growth that there are developments, but that are, you know, the growth pain for growth, right? I think we have to recognize that we're trying to manage what growth is being expected, because we kind of chose to some of it, so I think we're doing it in a responsible manner versus a direct
Yeah, I, I think we need to, you know, we're gonna, oh, if I allocate our population growth, and then we need to pick on it, and I think that we need to make sure the other cities are pulling their, their share. Paul's book does need to grow up in spite of what council issues, Baker's needs to pick up some growth in spite of Baker. And so
So where that pushback's in the mountain is when we plan, when we vote on the county about climate policies, Paul's was asking for additional UGA, so they're on happy growth. We didn't want that, and we need, that and I plan to push back on that at KRCC. But ultimately, we might, you know, it's, it's the county, only county cities can
Well, what's interesting is when they do, when, when we get the O F numbers, the metropolitan city, Rotherham gets its allocation, this is just what you get. And the county gets a percentage, that's what the county gets, and then this other bucket is divided between Paul's, Baker Diamond, or Orchard. And we've got one jurisdiction that's zero, right? We've got another jurisdiction that doesn't want to densify, they want to expand the UGA so that they don't have to grow up. So it, it's interesting, but that's why I wanted to just have us talk about growth.
And we have capacity. You know, in, in the industry, we plan this, and so it's, it's a valid question. From here, where do we go?
You know, we just can't get behind it, or you just need to understand that all of this, not only build it in the deep, and make sure that we've got a concrete plan.
Quality, why?
Growth pays for growth today, growth pays for growth long.
Are we comfortable with that the development of the UGA is up to the standards that we would want, had it been developed in the city? The only way we can control that is answer. That's one of my concerns with that. Yeah.
Well, I know that that's, I mean, prior to Paul's going to help bothering to the UPA, doesn't Paul's have a degree with the county as far as
Yeah.
standards and things that are consistent with each other?
Just for
Yeah, I mean, there, we, we have that ability to sit down and talk to the county.
Yeah, so that, that agreement was set up in 2000, and it's a very core agreement today.
Well, I appreciate that, but the ability
So they, the county tried to work on associated UGAs with Rotherham and Island probably 10 years ago, anywhere nowhere, so I don't know if it's an accurate type, the county did that. But Fred, you know, that's, that's something that you can ensure that it behind, make fun of. But just speaking along those lines, Kingsborough is an area that hasn't wanted to take a lot of population, so from that, she wanted it in the other UGA, so the county that forces growth in the artery as well, so we got the sense of that.
If you're wanting to negotiate a degree with the county, you're asking.
I know.
But that, that's
So, so is the
I
There's, there's already So, but do we want an annex to where the UGA? I don't know.
We have historically, and it's your, that's your council. We have, we have not, not, we don't have a mandate to go to, to do that. I think we historically consider any act that comes to us, provided it's a lot of money.
That's a big thing, we've not, in the past, presently, not in the community area, we responded to those areas wanting that, it's who else?
We lose money on the No, I, that makes fiscal sense, I was concerned that the standards of how it should be, there's a lot that you can't agree, but that's, that's just my, my sort of
The other thing we have to be cognizant of is so much the UGAs, you know, there's a formula, and I think they should 2050 said that the UGA totally can't be expanded, so Paul's supposed to want a larger UGA, that has to come from somewhere. So I think we have to consider that there may be a request for us to shrink our UGA. And when that land capacity report came out, it showed that we had access, you know, we can take 24,000, you know, light bulbs goes off and, and you know, do you want to shrink that UGA? And again, that's why we need this, we need these discussions, yeah.
The last time that process, I shared with the county, Trump, the UGA, and those other areas like Apple, we'll worry about that. We needed property owners to stay. We protected it this time. I said, in four more years, we're gonna go through this again, and I suggest that you exit the city if you want to protect it, because it's not a process that we control.
Okay, well, it sounds like you want to continue talking about that.
Well, I think it's more of our region, I mean, we're always, we've talked about it, but the fact, the question, if I can, and it is as the council, are we okay with supporting the growth this time, or I'm not sure what we can do, both are up there, but
I think our cabinet, our chair shared.
Yes.
And support that.
And Nick was going to work through this, so they did that on capacity report, and tweaked the formula, and he had a meeting with the county, and they use different budgets for wetlands than we do, so there were some areas that could reduce that number.
And, you know, and getting back to the idea of affordable housing, you know, if you shut down the business, you want to get that person, that affordable housing stuff, right? It's like, at least in our community, with apartments, multifamily, the development model, that is helping to affordable housing and check, you want to show that off, and I'll show you how affordable housing is.
So whatever.
All right.
So I think Joyce's question is, have you guys had sufficient discussion about this?
Yes.
When we continue this dialogue, as we got to vote on the CPTs and take our population allocation, but is there additional work to do with this area? I'm not, I'm not making so bad a sure, sure.
As far as stopping growth personally, I think we need to accept what's coming, but we need to do it carefully and with, like I said, I would love to be proactive in how that's going to occur, not whether it is.
There were the key words, proactive, we, you know, maintain our fair share of growth.
Well, then, to provide opportunities for proper growth.
So I'm hearing this, it will be on a later and, you know, just hearing the question, are we okay with supporting growth, just looking at you know, all the work with the capital budgets and that they need to be, you know, project, projects, I mean, and that they need to be maintained, and so just looking at growth holistically, understanding what's coming, and so that would be a potential future topic. And then, you know, after break, you'll be prioritizing these, that this I'm assuming this is, will be on agendas in the future.
I believe so.
Your discussion.
It'll always be here, but you know, the nice thing is, we've made comments about growth pain for growth, that's at the end of the day of the structure, but to me, at least on the website, much growth this year, it broadens the base that paid for the ongoing pain that's up the system.
So. All right, well, thank you. Anything else before we move on? We have about 18 or so minutes left on this agenda, I think it's a little bit, but do you just want me to go sequentially?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so what is the city's role in social issues? Anyone want to introduce this, who brought it to the council?
It wasn't mine, sorry.
The mayor? Are you here?
I am, I'm just responding to some of the questions.
Uh, who, what's the city's role in social
What's, who said, no, I don't think it was.
That's it, it's not his.
I presume it was, he's right, I didn't remember.
Okay, it's, it's been
It's a
Right, that was not a question.
And what we've done, I mean, we proactive, we hired and
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's getting people to resources that want help, you can't help people that don't want help. And, and I think from a philosophical level, I mean, there's not much, because of the Supreme Court decision that came out of Idaho related to camping, there's not a lot we can do, our, our, about camping. We can, we have parks and spaces, don't allow anybody to be in them after hours, so that's how we can prevent camping in our in our, some of our public spaces. I know that when Auburn is taking, if you're following with the news out there, Auburn is taking a more aggressive approach. Because they now have shelter, they have shelter beds in their community, when the county opens their facility up on top of My Hill, we will have shelter beds in our community. And that's a discussion that we have as a community, whether we want to be firm about people camping in our community, because that's the trigger. You can't be firm about it if, if you don't have shelter.
So is Auburn the jurisdiction that is, is penalizing those who are refusing shelter, right?
Correct, and, and
James.
And so that's, that's
Yeah, and is it, is it, is it true, are they truly, is it something that, it's like our vote thing we did that we're about to pass. Yes, we have something that is very punitive, how hard we take it, right, you know, we got something that we can take a threat, should be so.
Right, how much does that cost the nation?
If I can just comment on this real quick, we just roll the social issues, right, while that is so broad. One thing we've done today is to help us reflect the importance of ideas and decisions. That's where social, right, to make sure that decisions and the policies that we make as a council, that we're thinking through that. And that there is social justice in what we are. Things that we
I, I think this is our
Yeah.
It's broad. When they One, one
Yeah.
I was wondering if James, James because I didn't I had it there.
They're meeting with James, what was my name?
Part of the guiding principles.
Cool.
Great.
So a lot of excellent.
So I have, how do we prioritize needs of existing neighborhoods, not just growth areas? And who would like to speak to the
If this was bad.
Yeah, maybe it was too, I'm trying to remember, I was on call to make a convention.
So should be.
But that's what I was thinking, I mean, well, not always stop, it'd be my name.
What kind of needs did you have?
Well, the hardest question I made, you know, that's what we need to be responsible on growth, that's how our industry, our new streets, our neighborhood, and so how do, how do we pay for those other things that the development community is paying for, it's going to be more difficult on the streets. So, and it's challenging.
Right, because most of the neighborhoods in our city, outside of what's happening on the west side in the McCordwood area and all of that, we have really eclectic neighborhoods. And I'm thinking of the neighborhood John lives in, or, you know, further south of that, the Forest Park area, or my neighborhood. You know, we don't seem to get any attention for anything. And, you know, and we have needs there also. And when we look at the pavement management system, and they were going around with that thing, and kidding, I was so, I don't go to my house that, you know, the road will break apart, is what I was thinking. But I just wanted to make a conscious, you know, put this at the top of my awareness that, that our existing neighborhoods have needs too. You know, maybe park needs, there's infill going on, and we can't just cycle those.
That ties in well to the next one, when the Flint story comes to the value, I think that all ties together.
I see several things, we could, let's see, our, our old city, if you will, has on extensive payment devices. Whether it's a sidewalk, buckling, or breaking up, whether it's the pavement on the roads, whether it's access to city facilities or the department, whatever, I totally agree with you, and I think the theme of maintenance system as far as roads is concerned. To some extent, we'll do that, with a little bit of addition to the condition of the road, we also look at the cruising road that were the free card right long. So we're looking at prioritizing also based on usage. But
And, and recall, Chris has shown us in the competition that the federal grant program that buckets development for just sidewalks, on sidewalks, events. So, you know, there is a mechanism to, to try and get some of those improvements in some of these neighborhoods, and it's prioritized, but there's a dirty funds there, well. But there's a dirty funds there, well.
One of the things that I think, and this is more of just looking in my crystal ball, is that to the extent that we can, we should start looking at projects, so that we have, you know, if the Biden administration does get this huge infrastructure, then we've got projects that we can compete with. Uh, that, you know, we made the street, we building sidewalks, whatever it takes to be. But we need to be ready in case those plus two available that we can, for people.
And what, uh, I just may interject a little bit, those federal grants, and even some of the state money can go into our major corridors. Okay, but when we give the fingers out into my neighborhood, they're not going to qualify for it, or your needs.
Well, we don't know that for sure, but I, I, I appreciate that the priority will go towards.
Right, but that, if, if we had federal dollars to put on sidewalks down in pottery, down past the schools and all of that, if we had federal dollars for that, it would be local dollars for our needs.
Agreed, agreed. But like the city government, they've done a fine job of beating for what dollars that are offered today to do things like, you know, they're working on the six three.
Right, and that's, that would be like our pottery.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, those are, those are projects, whether it's South City, which is pretty expensive, but, you know, they're now, we're going to hold it at that point. So my point is, is that we just need to be in a position the best we can to compete for whatever dollars are available, when, as the mayor was talking earlier. If you're asking for money to buy ground, it's real challenging. But if you're asking for money to help develop, that is something.
So, that question is so important that we, if we have the transportation impact fee dollars, that we pay for, when you're not about to make sure that we get some additional elements of federal design, so that when the Biden administration comes out with I've got something besides, yeah, the only thing I have is Anderson Hill that's shovel ready, is Anderson Hill Roundabout. Right, that, that's not our highest need, we've got much higher need than that.
Well, it kind of goes along with what Beck was thinking earlier about straining, unstraining, you know, we need to have a whole list, because it's all we can afford, but we have to have enough substance to the rest that we would in the case where we can go down and say, this is the project that would be well for.
Yeah, I feel like we're just, put that kind of matrix together, that we look at.
Yeah, yes, I can't, I really need to call first.
Yeah, those are the things that I think we could do to keep our local neighborhoods, if you will, into the forefront of whether we have the budget to do it in phases, whether it's just a dollar, whether we're able to convince the community to do some kind of sales tax for the benefit district. Or whether we can compete for federal dollars, we have that list of where
Yeah.
to prioritize what's good for.
So I'm hearing, yes, on more conversation. And I know there's been a proposal to start looking at project needs, potentially creating a matrix uh, to identify needs for these areas that we have here. And that includes our parks, roads, sidewalks, sewer systems, uh, anything, and I've got the highlights here. Any other items or are all folks good, council members good moving forward with this? Any other conversations you have about this now?
Well, that would include things like street trees and all of those kinds of things, so.
Well, I think we have standards adopted for what street improvements would look like.
I think for some of this, you, you know, you hope for, but you hope you can chew more in a sidewalk and bicycle lane. Get some of that alongside.
Using South City as an example, we were going to make improvement south here. It's going to include sidewalks, it's going to include stormwater, it's going to include. It's all got to get within the standards that we adopted for roads.
Yeah, I think everything we do, that's what we are doing. As a matter of fact, when we do this single work here, that dieted street that's across the alley, I call it an alley, it's a cow, up over there. We're going to be forced to set the sidewalk, part of the positive that, the small one running that front, so we need to have a sidewalk over there to the first driveway. Because our chances are, we end up with a six foot, about thirty feet long, a six foot sidewalk in a way. That's, that's a chance, and we can't be needing from our, we're, we're, I was kind of tracking, I was, that's, in fact, we do two or three foot sidewalk here, it's really, it's a dam, a dam, that's the water going down, and it's three houses that our chance is a six foot sidewalk. So as we build city south, road, or three or other places, we have not, not only developers that have our hand, we need to.
We're doing pretty good, we have about four minutes left on this agenda, I just thought we could go a little bit. I just sent five minutes left on the agenda, and then, yeah, two left, and we can go a little bit forward. So the next one is preserving historic homes. What value, if any, does the council find in having historic homes, especially in the downtown area? And is there any interest in protecting them? And anyone want to speak to this, or introduce this?
I have several questions about this.
Is there, it spreads out, here, here, my, I own one. And I do everything period, because my wife says I do too. And, uh, it's really expensive, and if we try to put those type of standards, I'm, I'm concerned that homes will fall in disrepair, not everything worth to do what my wife and I are doing, you want to be the one to store it home.
Scott, did you have a question?
My, my question is, through the state, can somebody petition to have a home, if somebody is so interested? Then can they do that, what is our role and requirement to do that?
I probably agree with that, I think it's up to you to do property or to do, what they want to do with their house, I don't really know if they want additional protections, that's me.
Right, you're right. So, no, I, I raise the question, it's, it's, it's not easy to answer, I know that the person who, I see, formerly Lauren Ganty appreciated historic homes on one hand, but on the other, it was very much about not wanting to do anything that would, uh, prevent the homeowners from leaving their home, or put any bonus on the sort of changes we could make. And what, 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 um, sort of triggered this for me is that on one hand, I am seeing some of our downtown plans where we're talking about, well, one of them, one of the iterations, where city becoming more built up of all, I first of all, care, just accommodate the county campus, which I thought was the wrong, um, way to hook at it. But on the other hand, I thought, okay, so it's interesting that we talked about possibly allowing these areas to upzone, and I understand, you know, the designated, you know, nicely. On the other hand, it's funny that I can't put the shed in my front garden, because I have to, except that. And I know, it's sort of interesting that we're all saying that we don't want historic homes, because we want a three story multi-class. And I, I know that's not what we want collectively, but I think that is correct, because the county campus was already zoned, like, it's originally zoned on the campus.
Uh, we are allowing the, the property that's within the town, the county campus additional height, because we learned, we don't, we don't want it, what we don't want, I believe, is to expand the footprint for them to, and, and to need more land, they need to grow vertical versus horizontal to accomplish their needs. I don't believe we can upzone any of the residential property in our downtown, yeah, downtown town. And from kids' access to, uh, to county campus, none of the zoning is changing.
I think it's not one of the particular one map, because, and I think if they re, uh, color that now.
Yeah, and I think more than saying preserving historic homes, because Rob gave that mail and they had it, we have this historic home, very expensive. It's preserving neighborhoods. And, uh, I think I brought this because I'm fighting something in another town right now, uh, about preserving historic neighborhoods, uh, fighting a hospital that's been overreaching. And there's value within neighborhoods, uh, we started learning too many of the historic neighborhoods, and the value of your town actually starts to go down. And so I would suggest that we continue to focus on the value of neighborhoods. Um, and I don't know, historic, with that little second name, but, um.
Are you talking about neighborhoods getting zoned out, or are you talking about, that's, I think that's a different conversation than, than talking about historic or preservation of those that live in this area and houses this old.
It's true, it's true, zoning can kind of influence that, but I've seen exceptions.
I, I'm not aware of any situation in our town.
No, which is, it's not here, it's not here, but that's something that I.
Well, you know, it's all.
Yeah, right.
I'm, I'm a little concerned with just, what does that mean? Preserving the neighborhood, uh, preserving this neighborhood outside of city hall would be different than preserving, you know, around the park grocery, where most of those houses were built during World War Two, and if, for, garage is definitely what we want for.
Well, I think we needed the final preservation.
Yeah.
I was there at camp, or something, I just say.
Be a bit challenging for.
Yeah, I, I hear you, I'm. It's subject here, here to some of that.
I don't have that solution, but I just wanted to raise this discussion, you know, because I, I think you do like the historical areas as well. But, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's. I'm ready, all right. So am I hearing that this is worth a further conversation?
The historic preservation.
Yeah, the, the conversation on preserving historic homes, and then a reframe for preserving historic neighborhoods, and, uh, there was some comments on, is this consistent with the current cut, there was an example of consistency with the current codes and new development or other codes. The campus example was provided, uh, and then just a comment on what does this mean to, to preserve neighborhoods? How do we define that? And another comment on this, this, the historic neighborhoods increase the value of the city, so.
So, for me, the, you're, we have two issues we're talking about, one is this, like you talked about historic homes, and, but the other is, I think more of a comprehensive planning question, if you want to talk about preservation.
I would say, no action, figure out.
Right, and the other thing, Scott, I could just add to what you said, I think it goes back to the other full up point we had about how do we protect our, our existing neighborhoods with the growth, I think that's, I think those are married, yeah.
So I'm hearing two, two issues or points, preserving historic homes versus preserving, preserving neighborhoods with new growth. Is that correct?
Good enough for government.
Yeah. As long as, when I write things in the notes, though, where you're going to talk about, it helps you remember. So, but let me know if I can add any words that are more helpful. Anything else on this before we move to the last topic or issue? All right, I think we touched on this before, transitory accommodations, and we're just a little bit over time, we're doing pretty well, only four minutes. So who would like to set the stage for this topic?
Sure, yeah, uh, I just raised it because the county has a temporary facility ordinance, which is actually allowing them to open their facility in my own, and, um, I think, you know, I'm very supportive of that. But what I was speaking about is, if somebody wanted to cite something, the city, I don't know that we have a building that is comparable. And I don't know, you know, what is our responsibility, do we feel we, we need to do it or not? Uh, but if he did, maybe this is something that, so that's the thing, there is a way to adapt the county's ordinance for us, that is, is interesting. Yeah, so, I, I want to speak to the county, and then maybe if somebody has a similar reference. But the county put together those kind of programs about three years ago, right? This is the first time, so there was a lot of call for that, and you, you probably, it's not that, not that, well, it's on, sure. But that's the first time it's been used, so I think it'd be worth it. If you're really interested, talking more with the county about what works, what, what are the barriers with the disorders that they adopted. But I'm interested in hearing what reference they did for county home, I know that they have opened it up for many years.
They just relax their eating.
Yeah.
We more need that.
Right.
Not to the extent, they're, they're allowing to mold more, more than one. You know, it's, it's, you know.
But that's not.
And, and, and eighty users are completely different from what I've seen around.
Right, yes.
And these, the tiny, the tiny homes, right, that don't have a bathroom or kitchen. Uh, and they're building them, they're working them, but.
And I believe there's a residential code issue with tiny homes, well, I don't know that we've got them for you. Whether they can be built outside of. Well, I, I, specifically, if somebody had lived in the city, would they be able to accommodate the the tiny homes if they wanted to, on their own property, I, I don't think.
And it seems to be every time, everybody acknowledges, so many things to be built. But once it's cited within thirty blocks of your home, that whole neighborhood comes out and says, no, no.
Well, and then you say, why do you do, like, I don't see anyone building one, so why would you consider allowing two, because it's not a lot, one's, not enough for that.
Well, and hopefully with a pre, pre-approved plan, that, that will change it, but when you say tiny homes, are we reading tiny homes here? Are, are you thinking about the tiny homes that, for example, like the county was proposing, or is it essentially?
Tiny homes.
Yeah. glorified share, is that what you're thinking of, is?
Yeah, it would be a village of them that would have separate buildings for bathroom and kitchen services. Each individual, you know, would not have, basically be a separate.
I know that one of the trips we have secondary is in negotiation with the county to place the, the tiny homes. And that was moving along until the residency requirements changed. Because initially, it's my understanding that the occupants of the tiny homes were going to be sober and drug free. And then there became this movement that you have to provide housing before you can provide sobriety. And that was a game changer for the church, there may have been other things.
Yeah, that's a whole number of things that included against that, including the management oversight, a few parts, right, when you do that, and various organizations back my level.
I'm already getting calls about what the county's doing, the top of the bill that's not the city, and what I'm going to do is stop it. We should stop it, and I think we should take a wait and see, and how, what I, for the county initiative is, this can't only be in South Kitsap, we, this Central Kitsap and North Kitsap, we can't be the only facility in the whole county in South Kitsap, and they told me, but until it happens, and, and so I think.
Well, that, that was part of the issue with the sound, where they had a meeting, I think it was a difference with, for the neighborhood. And those guys came out with, you know, torture the max.
So I don't know, we, we wanted a second one, or some, well, I was waiting a second one, if, if there aren't any other facilities in, in the county, we have the only one already, why would we want second? I think the second one means we have Central Kitsap and North Kitsap more.
Yeah, I think, I think that was their overall plan, was okay with the South Kitsap, if you do. Yeah, I think they intended Charlotte, wanted a compartment or a belt for a really long time. But, but that being said, you know, I, I would encourage more discussion of this at Land Use. I mean, I, I don't know how you're going to force the other jurisdictions. I mean, I, I don't know how you're going to force the jurisdiction like all of us.
It won't be here, it's just county has. No, no, it could be in Kingston, the county, it could be, you know, there's, there's other, county has. You know, all Kitsap counties, not just out here. Right, and I don't know how we make that happen or continue to push that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Well, that's a setting to another year.
It's already a dysfunction, yeah.
I know sometimes we get the.
Okay, so I have a vote for further conversation.
At Land Use.
At Land Use. Does that, does that sound good to, to everyone to discuss this at Land Use? Right, I think that we need to be continually.
You know, we had a presentation some time ago about transitory community use and how they could be really embraced by the neighborhoods. Neighborhoods don't work that way. And so I think if, if it can't be done well, there's other models out there, so I wouldn't mind talking about it as well.
Okay. Uh, and is everyone else agreeing with that? Anyone not agree with that? Enough, okay, great. So just to, to recap, there was a note or a recommendation to talk to the county to see, to gain more information. And. Just hearing it's controversial. And there were some good examples of the tiny home village and so. I think that's it. All right, so it's eleven thirty one. And it's time for the break. And then we're going to come back, I'm going to write these out. We're just going to do a dot exercise to.
You know, I don't think that, I don't think these need to be prioritized. I think, I think what I'm more looking for is some of these things that pop on. And then we, it's going to be a different list than what we, these are, some of these are big picture, well, let's give you.
Hmm.
That aren't a lot. We, we, we're going to have a mid-year review.
Okay.
For the council, so I think the City South Stormwater, so these things are costing money.
So you want to prioritize the projects?
Not so much, we have our projects and they're already funded. And if we're going to do more, planning more other projects. The City South area, it's prioritizing that because there's likely not, there's never enough people. So we're, we're, we're going to prioritize that.
Okay, well, why don't we, we'll make a list. And, and then when you're, you come back, we're going to be prioritizing some.
And anyways, I feel some more to get you on that list. So things that are popping up.
Right.
I was going to learn.
Excellent.
Must be get both lunch going.
So why don't we come back at eleven forty five and.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Eleven forty five, so it's a, it's twelve minutes.
It's still eleven forty five, we're not on the same page and I got.
Yeah, we need to.
So before I return that call.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been great. Okay, we're back on. Nice job, Sean. Uh, we're all healthy and so as, and I think you missed this, Sean. Uh, the mayor was saying that, you know, there's some projects that came up on conversations today that we're adding on here. And there's a mid-year review coming up, there might be some additional funds. And so what a great time to create a list and then we'll prioritize it. So the list has been started and you agree with all of this, we'll go ahead and keep it on and then continue the list. Does this, I'll just start with, does this look good, what we've started with here? Anyone, anyone not agree with this? List of three.
Street gaming, level road designs, advancing the level of designs and City South. Three that I think I heard today.
Community centers.
I, I would say. We're, we're back in these four, community center, it's the employee thing, it's that. Uh, the road in front of it, the plaza around it, because I think I thought a lot of short term. You know, this, uh, I, mid, mid writing the review. I, we probably have covered, maybe not, maybe a couple hundred thousand, you know.
Well, one of the things that, you know, I talked about before, it has this. Does the city need to plan or buy parking spaces and whatever parking structure to support? Not like community center, but you know, our facility here, so.
I, I think that, I think, yes, and I think that the second item on the theory is parking. Uh, which is a point, so I would add, I would add the number five is this. Parking, because I think we want to, over time, plot back a lot of our parking, three open space. I think needs are, do we want to put resource, somebody's going to build a parking project here. I don't know that it's, it's a secret, but I think once the bank and the city come to an agreement. We'll have people aligned, wanting to participate in this project. And, and so if that project gets off the ground, we want to put resources here to call it parking.
That's my point, is that's something that we want to consider being aligned.
So I'd say parking.
So public parking and is that separate from community center parking?
It's better related, but I think there's stuff funding.
Well, I'm.
So what, what I'm seeing, what I'm seeing a need in a community center is remember when we see all the lies. We, we know that we need to spend about a hundred thousand dollars designing what the front end looks like. I think that we have, we have a community center and a bank campus. And there's two distinct public plazas that are just, we know we need them, but we, somebody's got to design these and nobody's started those process. So I think that, that's likely what the community center needs, but also ancillary to that is there are parking needs for the community center. But there's also, if we're going to keep up, if we're going to create those public plaza and take away parking, where are we going to put those parts?
I was impressed with the bracket, right, because parking is probably broad.
Yeah. Well, I would say downtown parking then.
Let me ask this question, which so the department entry review, revenue, access funding. What are the projects that are needed and we already have a shortfall, but we're adding more than that. First down.
So I'd mean number five is fund existing new.
Okay. Fund existing project.
Yeah, fund existing project.
We got a lot of stuff already to. Have a solve for.
Yeah, I present those are up the top of the list already.
Okay, so just going back to help like parking. Do we, we have a public, a parking associated with the community center, do we want to add another?
You want to keep it local, local to the community center or we want to separate?
And it'll be public downtown parking? How much money are we talking about?
We have cash carry forward remodel.
Free.
And we have. We're having an interesting sale factor. And I don't, we don't want to spend all of it. Uh, we don't have to spend all of it, but we funded our reserves and we're in the service business. We, we shouldn't, we, we need to deploy these dollars responsibly. Uh, and so we are, and I had some hope, I mean, we're a quarter million dollars in, in the, in the first quarter ahead of plan. I don't know with the rest, you know, again here, are we going to get half a million? I think we're pretty comfortable with, we have three million that was cash carried forward and we're adding to it.
Yeah, you know. So we're talking just immediate, right, monies.
Short, short term, as we, as we, as Noah and I start having conversations with you guys about mid-year reviews, the mid-year review. What do you want to see us bring forward in a prioritization? So we're going to make a list and then we're going to ask you guys to prioritize this with.
Yeah, I have a question on the community center too, because you're talking roads and you're talking. Parking and speed up, right. But this community center is going to sit on that one parcel of life. And do we want to include any plans for the, the outside area that's going to be our responsibility?
That's what I was referring to, the, the plazas.
Okay, so.
So maybe we could use a project. So maybe it is more broad, it includes more than just the building.
Yeah.
And waiting for the community center, so.
Okay, great. So I added projects, fund existing projects. I'm going to circle back around with the parking just to get a, a final on downtown parking. Is this something we want to add? Downtown public parking?
I think we somewhat got it captured here.
We're talking, we're talking three million dollars. But we're talking near term, we're not talking that, so I don't know what we could solve parking.
That's true, that is true, that is true, we're not, I didn't say in, in a, the next biennium, you're right, you're right. This is, this is short term because we're, we're trying to deploy dollars in twenty twenty two. Providing human resources and.
So this is the next funding. How it, with the time.
And with parking in the waterfront versus construction parking. I was thinking that was more broad, you had mentioned the issue of parking down there in the waterfront. That's easy to say, but what does that look like?
Yeah. I, I think that you had it right, that this community center, it's, it's, it's solving this, and these are probably smaller bites. It's the design for the street frontage, the design of those plazas. Because if we do move forward those plazas, then it will displace parking. And if we do that, then in future budgets, we're going to need to participate in the parking shortage.
John. Just to say, is there anything, maybe that next point is kind of a little bit of a windfall problem that they're trying to, something that's not this huge, long-term issue. Work, and so is there anything from a, you know, getting back to providing services, their equipment? That are, that people need, that we would literally want to buy that truck earlier than before we could do that. Or, you know, the street gaming, right?
You guys really took care of those needs in, in the. It's, it's human resources.
Even though we did, but.
No, human, human resources. So I mean, that could be, but we could allocate.
Yeah, but human resources.
I mean, human, human resources.
So human resources, I'm almost.
Is that, so.
Hold on a minute, we do prefer to just talk about what we need by, before I run up with a sticker on something.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And what is we're talking about?
In particular, I don't believe I have space or training, training capacity to bring anybody else in in engineering. Or I, I think likely we're going to ask you at the mid-year review, here, here's one. Our intern, our planning intern to become a, a planner. Nice, so that, that's going to be an aspect, that should be on this list. And then another ask.
And it made us know that you're going to give a presentation here on human resources or no?
It won't be this.
Oh, I understand.
Granted, that, that over there is way far out, this is short term. So I would say planning intern.
So HR.
I don't have any dots.
Yeah, I don't have to say it, just plant, planting.
Planting.
Two.
What, you're selling in dots?
Rob, can I?
Two plants.
What I thought we were talking about.
We were, but it's triggered something in my mind.
I appreciate it, but we were talking about these, that was, Charles, what it's called, windfall. To me, putting staff on something that is short term.
You're right.
How do we get support at the mission?
You know.
Now, if we want to broaden what. And that's why I want to talk.
So, so you need, yeah, you need to notice if we're going to put this into human resources. We're going to fund it with the short term need and then.
Support it with the long.
We got to support the long, consciously.
Right, but let's say that that becomes party number one and it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars to a year. We can fund it for ten years, four point two or three one, we could also, if it became the number one priority.
So to your, to your other. To your other question, whether or not we want to make number seven, public works staff. Which is the guys in the field that do work. Okay, and then whether you want that on the list.
Well, there, that's kind of back to Charles, compared later, just human resources, if that's. You can figure out where it will be allocated, who wants to spend their money for more potential products.
I, I'm not advocating for it, you brought it up.
How well we have our building. That's like where it is.
That's a bigger, the bigger picture, not the plan for or to identify needs.
So, so I'm hearing that there's some controversy, should we leave this on and then people don't need to vote for it? Or should we?
I can assure you that this fall, I'll be asking for this. If, if our, if our development activity continues the way that it is, we simply can't keep up. And we've got an intern here doing the job.
We don't need it on this list because, because the revenue created by that apartment more than takes care of that.
Perfect. Strike it off.
Okay, I'm going to strike it off, yes, everyone is. Okay.
It's very simple. Yeah, that's, you're right.
So maybe I'll just do a little round robin. Cindy, do you have any projects that you've heard about recently today or that you'd like to add?
I think it's overwhelming, we're talking about three million dollars plus, but, you know, I think we just had news come to us recently of a situation that really needs attention to. And whether it's with additional lighting right now or what can we do in City South.
We've got it on the list.
I know.
But, but it's.
You got three million dollars, that, that would take all of them, wouldn't it?
Oh, we couldn't solve.
Well, that's assuming that we all put that one as a priority.
So.
So I'm hearing that, that your priority that you're, is on here, do you want me to add anything else?
So, Jimmy, let me follow, so this is starting a process because number one, to solve City South, put street lighting and sidewalks in, we have to solve stormwater. So it's, so, so step one is buying someplace for the water to go to and then designing the infrastructure. And then it'll be a process to put sidewalks in, to repaint those streets, put the street light. So, hold on, you're not, you're going, you got to put your stickers before. So the question is, what, is there something we missed?
Yeah.
You want on this list, that's the question.
Yeah, anything real that's not on the list that you'd like to add for consideration?
Um, yes, when we do the, the City Hall influence, absolutely, there has to be music coming up.
We got that covered.
Yeah, you only call it clock. I have not, I've yet to see the music element written in.
You'll be voting on the contract at, at the end of the year.
Otherwise, you know, that would, it's, okay. So don't add anything because you're voting, this is captured or you want to.
You can leave them there.
I'm happy to add anything.
He doesn't get to vote on it, it's not fair, we don't have to vote.
Take me to, take me to, you can put it on the list, take me to task in November when, when I bring the, the design. Chimes. She wants, she wants music out of our clock there.
Okay. All right, and then I'm just going to do a round, Scott, is there anything that's not on this list that you like to add?
We have four dots, right?
You actually, here's how it's going to work, you have three dots. And you're going to put those out and then you're going to put black dots where your biggest party.
Right, I'm here.
Okay, Sean, anything you want to add? John? Fred?
Land for sites for the second, um, public works, or just for the city to buy. They can land, if the opportunity comes.
You're saying land?
Land, real estate, yes.
Real estate for municipal purposes?
I think that's a great discussion for what the other best. The acquisition or potential.
It'll start though with that. It'll start though with that, uh, comprehensive plan, to identify, because that's what will identify the needs. So we can't buy them by the land till you guys find a study to tell us the driving need, but. So, I I think we would, can we add to this, um, uh, planning? I think the the, we can't do this until we plan for it.
Okay, right.
So can we call this the planning under?
And it has to be.
So this is just ex, the extra money we have. And so, like, developing our comprehensive plan for twenty twenty four, that's gonna be in the regular budget.
There's things we're just gonna do, you're right, we have to do the comprehensive plan, yeah. Yeah.
Beck, do you have anything, just looking at three million plus, needs to be spent by twenty twenty two? No, I'm good, you're good.
Can I just ask about number five, how can we, well, at least in my mind, not make that a top priority, so it's it's sort of by default. If we don't make that a top priority, you're saying we don't want to fund this, so.
Here's how this could be on the list, is, I laid out that likely, we're gonna borrow money for city hall. That we're likely gonna get, money is really cheap, two percent or less, for, and and the enterprise funds have, we can only spend enterprise funds, money on enterprise. So, the sewer and water projects, I'm proposing that we're gonna probably borrow money, and that the enterprise funds will pay that, okay? But we could take general fund dollars, it can track, general fund dollars can go to the enterprise, we can't take enterprise the other direction. Right, so, you could say, I'm not comfortable with the city borrowing money, and I think our biggest priority is to take our general fund dollars, put them in an enterprise fund, and pay the cost of those projects, then, just into, for for rent, there's there's a certain amount of risk. We have, we have a whole discussion, we gotta know about risks and revenue projections to get to a bar.
And that is the exact point, why I noticed that we could talk about all these before I run up and put a sticker on, because I think there are current projects that personally can be now a mortgage on this building to pay for the approach, it's a no brainer. We don't need to take the short term one time dollar to go run and fund it, but there are other projects on that list, and maybe it's not about it, we could consider using our own dollar before we would borrow it, but you know, Rob raised a good point, and some of our enterprise funds that, yeah, I don't know, you could never report it, but, price of money right now.
The very, the very first one, if we borrow money to pay for that, with our enterprise dollars, we won't, you know, there'll need to be a a conversation about how are we gonna accomplish other things in there, so that that's that's.
A perfect example of that, I think, that you, that you spent this one time dollar on, but not necessarily to pay for the building improvement, which would hardly be covered.
Would you like me to add enterprise fund under that, or do we know?
I think we all know.
It's under number five.
It's kind of five or five.
Included.
Yeah. It's in that.
Okay.
Yeah, these, these, there are existing projects, this isn't an existing project yet, but it's the same concept, the existing projects.
If it's an existing project, some of them, I think, we should use the project dollar for, and some of them, I don't think we should, so, how am I gonna look at?
Okay, so the existing projects that that are in the budget and moving forward, that we could potentially clean out and not use restricted files. The Vettel roundabout, but I believe we'll have enough in traffic impact needs to pay our match, that we have federal money, okay? We have the marine pump station, and we have three wells. Uh, that's, we're all enterprise and city hall.
Now, out of that list, what in your opinion has the highest likelihood of success for grant funding, low interest?
Uh, they all, this this stormwater utility does not have a revenue that the other, which I didn't name any of those, but their run.
Right.
Does not have a robust revenue source, it doesn't have a capital plan, and capital facility charges, nor does it have a robust, uh, you know, money coming in from 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 rates, it's it's seven dollars a, uh, bi-monthly, I think, or might be seven dollars a month. Okay, so, we're we're, I I feel, and in particular, today, Foster isn't allowing us to move for any of our well projects. So we can't solve a short term problem with that, and we're likely going to, in the next twelve to eighteen months, collect a significant, so it might solve itself with us increasing the connection charge.
So I mean, number one is, I just kind of thought, maybe I've done this down, but if I were just to look at three million dollars, right? You know, I I just, it resonates with me, I said, buy the Sydney South, I have a million, I got a million to street paving, and put another million in your, 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 uh, enterprise.
Yep.
Million, million, million.
Yep, or I would look at that Vettel design, the Vettel design is important for us to, and I don't know if that is, definitely.
And here here's, here's the beauty of it, is we could prioritize this, so what we're waiting for is, I believe we're gonna have enough restricted funds to do this, but if we don't, then we put general fund dollars to it, because we wanna use our restricted dollars first, because they're most is most restricted.
But see, part of what you're saying, Rob, that resonated with me, is like the Vettel growth design could be funded with the.
That's what I'm referring to.
Why shouldn't we take our valuable fund dollars, maybe for something that growth was supposed to be paid for?
So, so, should we just write impact, yes, impact fees?
I mean, that's.
Sure.
Well, I thought we were talking about, where do we place these one time dollars?
Yeah, no, I think this is wonderful, yes, impact.
Yeah, yes, for, I mean, but it's, it's provided to the impact fees, come in where you want them to, now, if they don't, do we want to lay that? And look at it.
Aren't those the same impact fees we're applying for the Vettel, the Bay Street Pedestrian Cal?
No, no, that's true.
Oh, that's true, that's correct.
It's traffic impact fees, and we need to, remember I said, at the beginning of the year, we needed eight hundred, and we're down to about four hundred, and we're only three months into the year. I'm feeling pretty good that we're gonna have, by next year, we're gonna have eight hundred we need, and then there might be a half a million dollars that we can program into this design.
I wanna make sure I'm just being able to exercise this, or are we talking, where do you think we should spend the dollars, the one time dollars? Or whether or not these projects are all of a priority, because certainly up the road beside is. But not necessarily to use our one time dollars, if we're gonna be able to fund it with traffic impact, so I'm trying to figure out, what is it, Rob, my dot?
We may not be using the dot, we might be just.
Oh, just.
Solving this.
Yeah, I I think it's a, yeah, it's a mechanism for a conversation, and you can, if in, if there is, if you are all in agreeance with the top three, hundred grand. Well, I can have the dots, but there's generally, uh, it's a mechanism that.
Well, I kinda like John's approach, you know, if if there we get three million bucks, I don't wanna put it all on a project, I think we could split it up where we feel appropriate is. I think he's got two million to street paving.
And I'm just gonna write it on.
John, I I'm not even sure, guys, that I can get from a human resources standpoint, I can get a play a million, but I know we can get to five hundred thousand, we can try to get to a million.
Or after that.
Or, so let's, so let's start, is everybody, let's 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 finish that whole, this is enterprise fund.
Yes.
It's not part of, let's, let's take it out of this one time money, is this a priority to get this design done, so why did the traffic impact needs come in sufficiently to pay for this?
Yes.
Yes, so I would say, we write in this box, yes, with impact.
Right.
No, let's assume that we're not consuming our human resources.
Chris believes that. That, you know, what what?
Saying we have limited resource.
Well, he's gonna hand that off to, what, he's gonna.
That's great.
For your contract, you know, so there's some procurement aspect, but we're not, that's not a designer duty.
Okay, so are we just saying that this is taken care of now?
Yeah.
It's not part of this discussion, because, so, for providing, it's on the list, but it's provided via the dollars come in, the restricted dollars come in, yes, it's the priority, we want it.
And we all agree with the.
Now, it's different.
That's why we said.
Time that's gonna, absolutely, we don't have it in storm, and we can't read it, we need.
You got here, you did, back there with that, mayor, we just said one million.
And it's available to us now.
We could buy the property now.
And we never lose on, we have so.
So then, let me rephrase what I said earlier, so then if we were to look at, say, a million dollars in street paving, we could use contract.
Yeah, I agree.
Right.
And then the third million, I'm not just, let me finish, the third million, where we're talking about funding existing projects, I wouldn't put it into a a enterprise fund, yes. Let's leave it in general fund, until we solve that, because once we put it in, we can get it out, right, so we're kind of earmarking it, like, official, let's go to law.
Million million.
Right, but I, rather than putting ten thousand here, whatever, I I like the big chunk of money, but I'm not so sure that we don't need to put some money into that community center project and get that.
But I thought that's in these, I didn't think these existing projects.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not funded, and and I would say, it is not a big money, but I would say, a quarter million dollars between the road and the plaza to start those designs. You put seven, two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars would 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 start those designs.
I think what John was saying, I don't know what word to hear about, but that million dollars that he pulled with current projects, that community center stuff could fall into that community project list, so you got a million dollars that's embedded above what's before.
Four or five in your mind.
Yes, and once we figure out, you have our enterprise, oh, then we know where, if we have to go to the enterprise fund, we can get it, right, this airline, like, if you get into general fund, you'll go.
Okay, so you're, you're, you've combined these two, and you're saying, put a million dollars in this bucket, and this is whatever's emergent?
Yep.
And then dances forward, it might be these designs, if city hall come, did, we're comfortable borrowing eight million, and it comes in ten, we might only want to borrow nine, pay it down.
I'm just saying that to me right now, with the city center, it's basically existing projects.
Yeah.
The train one, and so that's why I'm saying it's in the existing projects, we need to prioritize, with another million where it's best to use on those existing projects.
And there's so many variables, whether we have the ability to borrow money, whether we're able to get the grant, whatever, we have the money that we can respond to, whatever's appropriate for that.
That's right, street paving, there go the option.
No, it's.
So I'm here, I'm hearing add another million here to this new combined project, it's gonna, yeah, for the folks, Scott, yeah, Cindy, Beth, Fred, okay. Okay, so yeah, one million, I feel like the price is right, or something, one million. That's a saving, street paving, and that's one million, yeah, okay, you guys aren't gonna get to use your dots, we don't want to, okay.
We'll settle back for you.
Yeah, yeah, well, you can, you can, your dot, you know, if you wanna prioritize something else, so. So, okay.
Now, here's the other part, we're still gonna apply for that grant for this, that I don't think we get, but if we get it, then we get to talk about.
Well, then we get.
What I would say, is from of those three buckets, I would say the one we absolutely count applies to street paving, right, we might have flexibility for other ones, but I think you commit that money to paving, it wasn't too much.
Even if it, if it won't happen this year, you're talking like twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
It won't happen this, right, twenty twenty two, that's what we're talking about, you're, how will we deploy it?
Now, we've got to do it.
Your money's been scrapped.
Yeah.
Well, you know, what do you think about, uh, so, top three, you know, I I've heard, well, what if this grant, a grant comes through? Do we wanna just go ahead and prioritize, just so we know what the top are, or what is?
The existing projects that have been done for that.
So then everything else is just, okay.
Yeah.
So buying land for municipal purposes, that is, that I'm gonna get that.
That one's a silver one, it can't, one's a silver one.
Well, it, that could, it could, and I think you're going to want to fund the, the comprehensive planning process, it's probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollar buyer, so to holistically look at the needs of the city, and and create this plan that will drive number seven.
Municipal land analysis.
Yeah.
But you all have it sounds good.
So seven is the same as, did you say one?
Purpose is it's same as one.
Okay.
But there's a process.
Yeah, but I would.
Yeah.
But we are going to have long, longer term needs in this budget, what we're talking about, twenty two, that we need to draw, driven from study, that we need to pay for.
Okay.
It's not, it's in, it's in the hundred thousand dollar range, not million dollar range. I think if our sales tax, everything used before, we'll be, we're gonna bring it forward to be ready.
Okay.
Well, and the other thing I think is, I would feel better in staying, you know, we talked about our our utility funds. We're talking about a utility fund as well, when we talk about the the city soul project, and comments that you made earlier, of developing our uh, project list for the stormwater, and revisiting rates to support that, I don't want to lose sight of that, because we're basically using general fund dollars to supplement, or to help fund something that the ability should be, if we were all in a perfect world, should be covered in itself.
And and maybe we actually, I mean, we know we're gonna move forward by that property, we'll have another bite at that after, before we spend these general fund dollars, and maybe from a work project, you're gonna get that at our facilities fund, I believe, this year, and and.
Right, no, I appreciate that, but it's something that, I mean, we need to move that effort forward, in addition to, we better respond now.
Yeah.
Noah, can you hear me?
No, you awake?
I'm here, yeah, I can hear you.
You see that, all of this, there's a caveat, that to make sure that you're supportive, that that we're not out ahead of our speeds, and you're already trying to plan for this in other arenas, right, so this would be truly surplus, and so obviously, any feedback you have moving forward on funding, you know, you're you're a critical role in this, and we need your expert, uh, I guess, witness to to this, so, caveat of that, that Noah understands the great piece of this, so.
I'm afraid he's there, but he can't see him, and he's shaking his head, and his, his eyes are in his hands.
He can't, one of these people, for Sean, Noah recap, the cash per quarter, three million, what we did talking about is instead of borrowing, that the council believes that Sydney South is one of the top priorities, and put a million dollars of that into there, uh, that they want to put a mil- a million additional dollars, potentially provided, the public works can perform on it, uh, to street paving. And then, we've got this bucket of other, you know, the all of the projects, when we're being, the council's feeling, the community center, the well projects, the sewer projects, some, whatever is emergent, in in on that front, that we take general fund dollars to to take care of an emergent need that the enterprise fund couldn't handle, did I capture that accurately?
Yeah, that's what I'm just getting on, the emergent need, so that we could say, maybe we could respond to the emergency, take what the loan, you know, you know.
So does any of that make, does that make sense to you, or does anybody make you nervous?
Uh, well, I guess it makes me nervous that we're only three months into a twenty four month fiscal period, that the three million carryport is fantastic, and uh, we would normally kind of have these discussions. That the three million carryport is fantastic and, uh, we would normally kind of have these discussions mid biennial review rather than the first three months into our, our kind of financials. And the other, and the other piece that makes me nervous is what you commented yesterday, Rob, with the governor, uh, changing the timing of property tax collections.
But I'll pause for a second here. This is the whole driver, I can give you the preamble. This is the driver for our mid buying review. Is not, I'm not, I'm not saying we'll spend this tomorrow. These are how provided, everything performs as planned. This, these are the priorities the council would like to see driving the mid buying review and for the expenditure to point.
It's that.
Okay, yeah.
Love Sydney.
Exactly.
Before the midyear.
It, it, yeah, it could, depending on the purchase and sales, it's out Sydney could move forward before that.
Right, yeah, cuz that's, yeah, then, then no concerns if that's the goal here.
Yeah, we're not talking about spending this money tomorrow. It's driving the mid buying or review process.
Okay. Great, well, thank you. And I think the only reason prioritize the dots is when people really can't have a functional productive conversation and, and you've just had a very functional and productive conversation. So that's a great. And if you, anything else on this, any other notes you'd like added or Cindy, are you?
The city hall chimes can go under your funding existing projects.
Yes. Okay. Honorable mention is city hall chimes. Yeah.
But that's what we get with the mayor.
That's, that's what you said, that loving existing projects. So just make sure that was in there. Thank you.
I'm gonna hit Mark Dorsey on.
Any other conversation needed here? And I'm just gonna recap and then, and then see if you have anything else. So we had about seven projects here and so of those seven projects, three were identified for potential future funding, uh, and the conversation will occur at the mid biennial review. Except for Sydney South, which could occur sooner. So Sydney South improvements, potentially one billion towards that. There could be a grant, uh, that comes in and, and then things might shift and that'll be a conversation for you to have. Street parking, one million, community paving, thank you, good clarification, street paving. And then community center, this is roads parking, sea level rise, uh, design and other items. Community center project, that's one million.
It's all that.
And that being, and that, okay, yeah, and that is a part of funding existing projects.
It's emerging needs on, on existing projects.
I like the way that John breaks it. It's funding for the, for you to view that existing projects and the community center falls under that as one of the project.
Oh, that's, that's a good start.
And it's not even exactly.
The title funding existing projects.
Surround, it surrounds the community center.
Well, I just got.
I can put that as part of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a subset of funding existing projects. Okay, great. Anything else?
That's a lot.
Yeah, good work. All right. Well, uh, I think that's all for this portion. We have about a half an hour left. We want to save it.
Take fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes?
For this and then we'll wrap up.
Yeah, so this is. Great.
So if you wouldn't like driving money.
I will do that.
Um, you know, we did an organizational survey last year, it was a hundred and eighty page document that all, we shared with all you guys. I kept waiting for the retreat to talk about and summarize what is within that report. And we have to recognize that, um, this was a moment in time last fall and you spilled some of these traditions. Yeah. And so I've got the comparison to other cities and we've grown our staff by four people since then. But I know that the others, many of our peers have also been the same. So let's just assume everybody's the tide's rising everywhere. I don't know for sure. This was a moment in time which was last October.
Comparable to.
Yeah, they, they happened. We've got our, our peers, our group of cities, fifteen to twenty-five thousand. Uh, there were, wow, you're joining with the next level. I can tell you how these people. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so seven other cities for our peers. King Harbor, uh, Paul's Oak, West Richland was picked because it was similar to us. And of course, Bonnie Lake, we're spying, uh, Bay Ridge and Bremerton. And, and Bremerton is much bigger than us, but we have to compete in the job market with them. So this is just showing you population wise as of last October, where we, where we're at, here's some more peers. And we only have one peer slightly above twenty-five thousand, Bonnie Lake, which is what I've. Bay Ridge, but all of our other peers are twenty-five thousand or less. That's that bracket. So go ahead, John. And this is your comparison of the number of employees we have, uh, in comparison to our peers, at least we did in October. I, and, uh, we'll spend too much time here unless somebody has any questions. And then I've got also as a capital level, which is the next slide.
So just that previous slide, it's hard to, hardly really tell. When you look at Big Harbor, it looks like they're really disparate compared to other.
The next slide.
For capital.
For capital.
The next one.
The next slide.
Okay.
Yeah, this is.
There you go.
For capital, yeah. Where Big Harbor is for capital. Where is it?
Third one. Different one.
Third one, right, yeah. Here it is, for capital.
Fifty percent more.
But they've got also. Generating that, so, uh, you know, we're, we're down over here. I, I know we're, you know, we got four people who are to, we authorized four different positions, so just wanted to share where we're at.
So I don't know where Paul's with it. I know I can print something for Mayor Erickson's, circulate her status level.
She's, she's.
But I don't know if they think, yeah, but I've heard about it with their council, but that if we added four to ours, then we would be pretty profitable to where Paul's voice is parting.
No, I think everybody's been hired by fifty thousand. Go back a slide, total number, total number of employees, if I have four, it really doesn't leave the needle. In comparison to what Paul's supposed to have. There's a hundred of them, we, we, if they didn't hire them, and we're eight, now we're eight, I mean, four, I think that's the number. Uh, so for capital, that leaves it. So go back to that capital. You ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, we go on to the next slide. Okay, so this is one, my, my attempt, uh, to capture what's happened since the survey. So things that were in the salary survey that you guys have acted on, that we've acted on. As we appointed Eddie Lund from HR coordinator to manager and reassigned her to the administrative and the organizational part of Q reports directly to me, now to the manager. And I have some working on, this was just building official, it was posted yesterday. Uh, on the street, Public Works, our initial start, it's hired, it starts in May. The IT specialist, new position, starts in May. The graded permit tech positions and you guys have, uh, we've already filled out those positions. There are promoters, one and two of all employees. The other one needs to get additional certifications and, and, you know, be able to form additional teams. So next slide. So does that bring it to you and do you have anything to add? Yes, I do. I will. Uh, so that report identified thirty positions that are needed for our state. Which is, you know, I'm thankful we have four people and we're ever adding to City Hall. And I'm so thankful that of those thirty, I, I cherry pick some things that I'm seeing is emergent in our, in the city. Um, one of the things they pointed to and, and when Mr. Dorsey retired, I'm not gonna do a merger or department and kick somebody out of it. I think Mark does a good job for us. Uh, he's our eighth council, now eighth council member and he provides valuable guidance. The position there. Uh, Mark does a good job for us as a city engineer and Public Works Director. It, uh, they recommended holistically move merging, uh, planning and public works together.
I can use the.
Yeah, I have, I have a problem with that. And here's, here's my reasoning for this. Nick Vaughn is excellent at what he does. And if I make him in charge of the boots on the street, he has no interest in it. He is a big picture guy and the planning and code development and it, it, it's not, I'll make him a manager of people. And that's not his, that, that, that isn't the strength there. And so, but very much though, I see the need to put engineering with the planners so that we're working cohesively together and that. So merging those two departments from the, the white collar aspect makes complete sense. And I think we need to have a, a public works direct or a manager, I mean, it's a public director level position. It's just public works, the guys out on the street as a, as a director board, if we made that change. That's, that's what I'm envisioning. Who knows, when we go into this, I might not be the mayor, so, you know.
So are you, are you essentially saying that the, the, the storm water reviewers would flip over to DCV? And that, that public works would be more traditional in their approach with tasks?
Yeah, I just, I think that the public works would be a manager and it's the guys at the shop with the boots out of the street.
Right.
And that everything related to planning and engineering would fall under DCV. And in this, in this model, I, I think it makes perfect sense. So they just, they, they gave me an idea and I said, yeah, that's a pretty good idea. But I think for our community, this would be a better, uh, there's a better way to be this, in my mind today. Um, I, for me to be, COVID has changed the world. I'm here much more than I have been in the last four or five years. I, I'm, as you know, I'm on the video DC board. Uh, I engaged in, keep sorry, to the council, Beck's abandoning me and he's gonna stick me with all the transportation stuff. Uh, and Beck, I, I, I can't thank you enough for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, Mike.
And, uh, but for me to be effective, I can't be here managing people all the time. And, and when we look at this, Noah was a bit disappointed that we're not there as compared to our peers as far as having potentially a city administrator. Uh, but I think it's in our future. And for us to be successful getting other people's money, that's what I mean. And, and we, we need to have that probably in, you know, where I see it in our peers is in that population of about eighteen to twenty thousand is where our peers have that function.
So I permits me about that. We're already exposed.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think this is part of our midyear review, but I think it's definitely something we're discussing and considering in our next budget. I, I think provided everything that we think is happening on there comes to fruition and who knows what the census is gonna bring us from a population model.
Um, so I, I thought, as you recall, that, that years ago when this was talked about, that there was a comparison of the city. And I thought there was only a, a handful of cities at Port Orchard's, uh, um, population at the time that didn't have city district.
I think we were talking about a different subject at that time. We were talking about.
Strong. Yeah, to a weak mayor manager.
Like Bay Ridge.
Okay, okay. And here's what I would say to that. One, citizens that know we don't want that. And now that I'm in this role and, and Beck can attest to this, when it's, we, there is no continuity. So this morning I'm on the phone about something about PS, KRCC with Mayor Wheeler and, and, and merits. Okay, the mayor on the job that changes every, you know, develop a relationship. And they aren't engaged because they're council members and they have, it's a part time gig, you guys get it. Okay, and, and for them to those regional responsibilities, they show up and they aren't participating at the same level as the other three leaders. And so it's just not, I, I was, I was actually advocate for that. And now that I've done this job, I'm not supporting that idea any longer. It, it, it truly, they don't, they are not represented regionally very effectively like we are. And then, and that is, it's how we solve, it's how we're gonna, you know, what I'm running to for the community center and I hope more, obviously more coming. My hope. Um, so this is in our future. I, I strongly believe that and I just want to continue to have that dialogue obviously.
Thanks for.
Yeah, um, I, you know, we're doing a, we're doing a park survey. My hope is our community is ready for more robust parks and recognition. I, I don't have the answer to that, but that was also in our, many of our peers have that, and, and we don't. Um, it also spoke to, none of us have, I kind of gave, I gave up the mind that was in support during COVID. Um, nobody, none of our directors have really any clerical staff. We all just do it ourselves and the, the survey said that that's not efficient use of our time, that it's just, we, we function and operate. So it's, people, people are expensive.
Well, and, and the model of that maybe just changed a little bit since everything's so virtual, digital.
Correct. And that's why I just, I gave up that because everything was just coming to me and to add another person to the process is complicated. Uh, laser vision. We, we're, courts department is hitting a home run on this. Finance is doing a pretty good job scanning documents and making it happen. I've got a decent DCV and the, the Public Works Department, they can't keep their head above water doing day to day, let alone taking on our history and putting our history in the laser vision. Whether that's interns or hiring a body for a short term project. Um, you know, I'm, I want to get laser vision up, the public records portal up, but in the next budget, we could be looking to find a position to get us to that next step. And, and so that when things like huge public records requests come in, it's more self-service versus us creating, yes, that.
Two questions. So, so are there deadlines for those to be getting obligated by the state? And then, could we look at a term? Could we look at a term based position?
That's exactly what I'm discussing here in probably in our next budget. We're, there is no requirements from the state. We have a public records obligation to fill and it will be much more efficient if all these records are given to us.
I don't want to insert this discussion, but to me, this is, this is bringing less representation in here. I really need to move it on your stop news and just live in the clock.
This is the last one. I'm just trying to get.
You're sort of through it and great question.
Okay. Well, and I'm just wanting to, it's just communicating what out of these thirty, what I'm probably seeing coming to you guys in the next budget.
Well, I think the only thing there, John, is that this is kind of what, this is a hybrid of what the state is suggesting. As Rob said, it's not based on what he thinks and very big, well, not necessarily, but it's still a result of what the council calls. So I appreciate hearing it, but I agree with John. This is your job.
Right.
You need to come to us when we're developing.
And I completely agree, but when I bring it to you at the budget process, the first time you heard it, like, you're not as receptive of. Remember when I talked about this at the retreat, the community guard?
That's assuming that I can remember it.
Yes, okay, so, um, that intern. And we're talking, we've talked to, we're already finding a partner about court security, it's like a contract with. Because our, that's how we're doing court right here. That's the courts part. And when we reopen, likely about fifty percent of our court is gonna be done that way. So right now, we're looking at a model where we pay our police officers overtime to do the court. Because we had a sixty thousand dollar employee previous. to do the court, because we had a sixty thousand dollar employee previously doing court security, and we can do this for ten or fifteen thousand dollars by paying some overtime. And so until we get to the point where overtime is costing us as much as an employee, this is the logical way to solve it, so I think that's it, Joy, isn't it? Yeah, what is that? Thank you, I promise to get you out of here by one, and now this is the good of the order, and wrap up the wimpy mess, and.
I appreciate your, and that is, um, I appreciate us being together and a team to take a bit. Point to do that we're here, because we are actually conversational. It seems like most of the work we've been doing lately is transactional. We come to the council meetings and the approval contract, and we do that, but we haven't had any dialogue to get us to that point, so that's the part that I really appreciate, is us being able to talk, and it's, Joy, you know, to get along well, and you know, kind of think alike, but it's important to just say it out loud, because we have a very.
And, and committees have been doing stellar work, but not everybody's on every committee, so when, when John started, some of the questions John was asking about streets and transportation, you guys on the transportation committee are very versatile. Not everybody's seeing all of it.
Sorry, I'm bad, my, my son can come through. Let's have that emergency, we're getting all this from hell, okay?
When you're good at the order, you know, since they're talking about like this three million dollar surplus, right, it's one hundred and five counts of it. Or we've done in the last four years to fund our reserves, right, so there's a likelihood being, right, it's, right, we we, we put plans in place to create, so we really can't talk about these things, right, so that's it. And it's a book for the public here, too.
That's right. Good point, Sean. I, I'm, I'm really proud of you, I mean, Sean, Fred, and I in particular were on dysfunctional cap. Uh, that, that, that the tail end of one, and this, you guys are, but I'm gonna work with, uh, I, I, I'm really gonna miss Beck, I hope we get her close, he was somebody just as good. Uh, so we don't, don't control that, but, uh, I thank you for your support of myself and staff, and I, I'll put our staff against anybody, we have got phenomenal professionals here, and, uh, I'm just probably looking to be a teacher here, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're doing a great job, it's some of those typical times, anybody's part of the experience. Work at one time, and the amount of growth and pressure we're seeing at the same time, it's just phenomenal, like, we're two heads of water.
Well, we're going there.
I think you're doing well.
I would, well, you know, I've had the, the fortune, opportunity to work with a whole lot of fairs.
Who, who's helping you record growth during?
I love the accolade, except we, uh, said, why are you? And I just wanna commend you on all the work that you did today, I was making a list, you know, just um, starting out with a lot of information sharing on all the existing and potential projects, which are amazing for such a small town, uh, and, uh, that is growing and becoming more popular, and then you added a new principle here for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and replaced another one, and that went so well, and so quickly, and, uh, and then just, uh, you identified future policy discussions over here, you didn't get to play your placement, that's okay. You can do that later, and so there's a lot of things that you'll be talking about over the next few months. And then you identified priority projects and funding allocations here, which was really productive. And then at the end, you looked at your organizational assessment, and, uh, I'm forecasting that you're gonna bring recommendations to the groups, so now you know what that looks like, so. And then just a lot of appreciation and gratitude for all the work you've done during unprecedented times, so yeah, and this is great, I just want you to know that it's an honor to be here, and I will follow up with just documentation of what it for today, and, uh, put it in a smaller format for you to refer to later, so I just wanna if there's anything else, Mayor, or anyone that.
Thank you for your time, yes, thank you, I appreciate it for the donuts.
Yeah, I think there's more, I guess the M R Us are off limits, but, um, we're gonna like that seven, eight minutes early, and usually there's not a lot of complaints for that, so.
Between the downstairs and the fleet park, the donuts won't run.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
No much, enjoy the nice day.